All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission meeting, the evening meeting, this January 5th, 2022. It's our first meeting of the year, and welcome. For those of you who are here for the first time, want to thank you for being here and hope you enjoy the part of the meeting that you plan to attend. So just to give you a little bit of an idea as to how we proceed with our meetings, we start with the pledge, and then we take care of a little bookkeeping, and then we have a couple of presentations tonight. Normally, our presentations are to recognize individuals, organizations, or events that took place or will take place in our community, and we have a couple of such presentations tonight, and I invite you to stay and enjoy them. So, moving forward, if I could ask you all to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Please be seated. Just an announcement to make, the City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting its City Commission Meetings in person, and if you have any additional questions regarding this meeting, please visit our website at www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings. I'll repeat that, it's www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings. Now, to help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines: Please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, distractive, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. And also, if you wish to speak on a specific agenda item, please sign up at the City Hall Lobby at the back of the room; a member of the City Clerk's Office staff will be there to assist you. So, here we are. I ask, would someone please move to accept the minutes and the agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
We just need to do the roll call real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Please call roll for attendance first.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yeah.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Here.
Mayor Trantellus?
Here. Okay. Thank you.
And for the minutes and the agenda.
And there's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes and the agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
And Mayor Trantellus.
Yes. So the minutes of the previous meeting and the agenda for tonight's meeting are now approved. So our first presentation, I invite Commissioner Ben Sorenson, who will present a proclamation regarding Literacy Awareness Month. Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Is Mark Miller here? Mark, where are you? Come on, there you are, Mark. Come on up here, brother. And, yeah, give Mark a hand. Yeah, he deserves it. And then, is Carrie Rodriguez here? Carrie, great, come on up. Come on up. Yeah, give Carrie. Awesome. How you doing, brother?
Good to see you.
Hey, Carrie, good to see you. It's good to see you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, of course. Would like to tell you a little bit about Carrie and Mark. Our proclamation will give you more information about them, and then I'd love for both of you to share some words, if you like. So, Mark is with Action for Literacy Corp., and Carrie is the Bayview Elementary Literacy Coach, among other roles, and actually, both of them have many roles they were. So, we wanted to celebrate the Fort Lauderdale Action for Literacy Month, being January 2022. So I have a proclamation I want to read to you. Whereas the City of Fort Lauderdale recognizes that reading is critical to every child's personal education, professional development, Action for Literacy Corp. believes it's responsibility of the community to ensure children are able to read at the appropriate grade level. And, whereas students who struggle to read by the end of third grade experience difficulty in the classroom and are four times more likely to drop out of high school, and whereas the Action for Literacy Corp. started as a volunteer-driven service project with the City of Fort Lauderdale Volunteer Office that inspired volunteers to form a nonprofit organization to elevate the program to a higher level. And whereas the City of Fort Lauderdale, in collaboration with the Rotary Club of Fort Lauderdale, Action for Literacy Corp., the Christian Life Center, faith-based organizations, businesses, and nonprofits have built, stocked, and maintained 127 birdhouse-style Fort Lauderdale Little Free Libraries throughout the city since 2016. Hopefully, you've seen these around at parks and so forth. And whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale recognizes and applauds the efforts of its community partners to encourage early literacy and asks neighbors to volunteer by mentoring a child and supporting educational programs of their choice. Now, therefore, we, as the City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, hereby proclaim January 2022 as Fort Lauderdale Action for Literacy Month. Signed, your Mayor, Dean J. Trantellus. Mark, why don't you come up and just share a little bit about Action for Literacy, anything you'd like to add?
A couple things.
Get up there. Get right up there.
First off, I couldn't have written that better myself. Thank you. We have come a long way, as was mentioned. This started as basically a conversation with the Volunteer Leadership Group in Fort Lauderdale back, go, five or six years ago. Today, as you heard, we have 120 little free libraries, and our goal is very simple: all children at the end of third grade should be able to read fluently. So, over the course of every year, we give away approximately 30,000 books through these little libraries, and I cannot tell you how much support we've gotten from the Commissioners to the Mayor to untold departments of the City of Fort Lauderdale, George Ruska and his Neighborhood Volunteer Office in particular, and he wouldn't be able to do what he does without Hal agreeing, so Hal's here somewhere. Thank Hal.
Let's get him up here. George, get up here. Hal, come on. George and Hal, get up here, please. Give him a hand. Go ahead, Mark.
That's basically it. We are tremendously honored by this. Thank you all for all of your support. Yeah, somebody sent me a note the other day and said, wow, we got to be big kids. So apparently, that must be true. So thank you very much for your support. Look for our libraries around, and if you have an interest in one in your neighborhood, we're always willing to talk to you about it. So, thank you very much, and thank you for the...
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Carrie?
Good evening, everybody. I just help out where I can and give Broward Schools perspective, especially for the City of Fort Lauderdale, but I wanted to thank George, who got me involved. And also, to celebrate literacy this month, it is actually Florida Celebrate Literacy Week the end of January, but we are going to have a book giveaway for Martin Luther King Day on January 17th, and we're going to have a Big Action for Literacy Day at Carter Park on January 22nd, and we're also opening an essay contest to all third graders in the greater Fort Lauderdale area. And like they said about the Little Lending Libraries, I'm just so proud to live in a city where literacy is appreciated and supported, and if any of you would like to help maintain a little library, just say George, and we'll get you started.
This is especially important to this commission, we've got three former teachers on the commission: Vice Mayor Moritas, Commissioner Glassman, myself, and then, of course, the mayor teaches us every day with his wisdom and guidance, so at least that's what we tell him publicly. So, thanks. Let's get up here and take a photo. Thank you.
You don't have to give all their names, but just, what are they, volunteers?
Volunteers.
They're all volunteers.
Thank you. Thank you. The public library, Dr. Canning, who's early childhood provider at schools.
Come on up. Come on up. Yeah, we can move over here. We gotta move in this way?
Two rows.
Yeah, we should get in the middle.
Wait, Carrie's being a crush here. Why don't you get to the front. Get to the front.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
It's all in that one. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Hello, George. I love my little library. Thank you. It's right near our house, yeah.
Next, I would like to invite our Police Chief, Larry Scorotto, who will recognize our Officers of the Month for October and November. Hello, Chief.
Mayor, due to COVID concerns, the officers are not going to be in attendance today.
Oh. Will you make the presentations tonight, or?
No, we'll do it at another time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry to hear that they're not well, so certainly hope they were vaccinated. Anyway, okay, at this point, we now move on to what's called the Consent Agenda. Purpose of the Consent Agenda is to allow the commission to vote on a number of items all at once that are normally associated with purchasing items and other miscellaneous issues. So at this point, I will ask any member of this commission if they'd like to pull any item from the Consent Agenda. If an item is pulled, you, as well as the Commissioner, will have the opportunity to speak on that item separately. And if your item is not pulled, you will have an opportunity to speak on that Consent Agenda item before we vote on the balance of the items. So I will start with Commissioner, Vice Mayor Moritas. Do you have any Consent Agenda items you'd like to pull?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. CM1.
CM1. And, is that it?
That's it, thank you.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
Thanks, Mayor. CM, CM8, please?
CM8.
Yep. CR5, and CP3, please. Thank you.
CT3.
CP.
All right, CP, I meant to say.
Charlie Papa, Navy, speak.
Okay. So we have CM1, CM8, CR5, and CP3 will be discussed and voted on separately. I have people who've signed up for CP3, CM8, CM9, only for questions only, correct? Who's here, who has signed up for CM9? That was Mr. Shine, just here for questions only. Are you here, Mr. Shine? There you are. Same with 10, 11, and CR5, that was also pulled. So, all those people who've signed up to speak on those Consent Agenda items, you'll have an opportunity to speak when the item is brought up. In the meantime, other than CM1, CM8, CR5, and CP3, do I hear a motion to approve the balance of the Consent Agenda items?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and so those Consent Agenda items have now been approved, so anyone who's here on those items, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you can continue to remain here. I can see you're leaving. All right, fine. I won't take it personally. Okay, so let's start with CM1. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So last evening at my pre-agenda district meeting, there was a bit of consternation, and this isn't specifically just for CM1, but in general. Chris, if you could help me understand, and also folks that brought this up at my meeting last night, there's a little bit of a concern over the increasing number of road closures on the Barrier Island with events, especially now with the La Solas Marina getting ready to go into construction. Is there any type of limit that we have for the number of events on the Barrier Island, and how many times we close roads on the Barrier Island?
So generally, I'd answer that question by saying, I've heard the commission say loud and clear that the number of events at the beach on the Barrier Island is really at its level of where we have interest in it being. The, I guess, the bar that I used in whether or not to allow this to come to the agenda was this is a multi-year recurring event, so this is one that's been out there before with some consistency, so you will likely see and continue to see those come before the commission. But when we get requests in for new events on the Barrier Island, especially as it impacts either the parking lot closures, road closures, or use of the park facility, we're fairly critical of those and scrutinize those. Ultimately, it's the commission's call, and if you all want an event, you all have to approve special event agreements. You either do or you don't. But this happens to be one that's been out there for several years in a row, which is why it found its way to the agenda fairly easily.
Okay, so that's good to hear, because I do think people are getting to that point that you just mentioned, where it's sometimes getting very difficult to navigate on the Barrier Island for those that live there, and I would just maybe think about that. Could I get a list at some point in time about how many events we actually do have on the Barrier Island in a year, and especially those that necessitate road closures?
Do that, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
These aren't complete road closures, right?
This one happens to be a rolling closure, because it's a lengthy bicycle event.
Right. Yeah, but is it both lanes?
This one has some length to it that's...
Yeah, but I mean, they're usually just one lane, or it's not the entire road that's closed.
Yeah, this would not be a hard closure of the road.
Right. But most of the road closures on the Barrier Island that are impacted by events typically happen between sunrise and La Solas Boulevard, and then headed to the, and run west to the Intracoastal from A1A to the Intracoastal. But it happens a lot now. It's just become an issue at my district pre-agenda meetings where people are voicing that a lot more now, where it's getting difficult, and so I just want us to be cognizant of that. And then also, especially with the fact that we are getting ready to undertake the La Solas Marina construction now, which is again going to necessitate a lot of road closures all around the La Solas Bridge coming over onto the Barrier Island. So I just wanted us to be, you know, aware of it, and maybe just, you know, keep that in mind. But thank you for that.
Will do.
And I'm fine to move this item, Mayor.
Okay. The item's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes. The next item is CM8. Commissioner Glass, Commissioner Sorenson?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. So, this is for a sidewalk closure for a new construction, and so got a lot of concern around the, understandably, around the sidewalk closure, and so wanted to get a little bit more clarity on what it would mean, what the impact is, why it, you know, needs to be this long, two and a half years, and so forth. So, Mayor, I think we have, maybe to start, if the applicant could give us a little bit of an overview here of what's happening, and...
Is the applicant here? Yeah. Is the applicant here? Yeah. We have a couple people who've signed up to speak on this.
Yeah, how many are signed up, Mayor?
Just two.
Two, okay. Thanks.
So Ms. Crush, this is, this is, this is not a road closure, right? This is just a sidewalk closure?
Yes, Mayor. It is proposed as a sidewalk closure. I do have graphics that would show that, if that would be helpful.
And what's the, what's the purpose of the request?
Mayor Commissioners, the purpose of the request is to close the north sidewalk along New River Drive East. And the reasoning is twofold. As part of, as part of the site plan approval for Riverwalk residences, circulation on New River Drive East for construction trucks was a discussed topic. And I have the picture of the, an aerial of the area as you see it right now. The...
Okay, hold on, hold on one sec, Courtney. So can you pull these up on, there we go.
Okay.
Okay. Now, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So New River Drive East. Part of the discussions with the immediate neighbors, city staff, Downtown Neighborhood Association in 2017, were rightly focused on appropriate construction management. So this site, which is east of the Third Avenue Bridge, has as an approved logistics plan, an entry, and you can see the arrows on the screen where trucks go into the site on the east, circle around, and then come out to the south. That eliminates the need for trucks to come in and back out, blocking traffic. As those two driveways are proposed, that then means that the five-foot sidewalk, which is in the driveways, is really having two conflict points about 70 feet apart if one were to travel. What's on the screen right now is the logistics plan, which was part of the then-city commission presentation in 2017. And as you can see, the sidewalk was shown as proposed to be closed at that point in time, with staff in its final approval conditions noting that a revocable license request would need to be processed. Also, the part of the reason for the request is, as part of the site plan, and I'll show you in a couple of slides, the developer, Gables, the builder, is going to be improving and expanding the city sidewalk. Right now, it's a standard city sidewalk. What the site plan requires is that there be, because it's along our New River, and we obviously have our New River master plan and our downtown master plan, that that be expanded in width. It will be brick pavers that will be maintained by the property owner, and will also have shade trees and silva cells.
That's after the construction's finished, though.
Yes, after the construction is finished.
Right.
At the, at the very, at the very end. You can also see that the logistics plan, which was part of the community outreach in 2017, and also part of the commission presentation, went into great detail about construction management, again, as part of the discussions with our neighbors.
So is there a sidewalk on the other side of the street?
There is a sidewalk on the other side of the street. You can see, there's actually a wide sidewalk on the south. And so what is proposed is to secure the sidewalk, again, for life safety reasons. If the five-foot strip that's 70 feet long were maintained there, there would be two points of, you know, construction truck conflict on that north side. So at the time during DRC, before this came to the City Planning and Zoning Board and City Commission, and then as part of this review, it was determined that for life safety purposes, having a detour where the pedestrians, and I think you can get a better idea of the Riverwalk sidewalk, which is on the south, that there should be a newly created sidewalk that should have blinking lights, it should be ADA compliant, and that consistent, and this was shown also in 2017, that pedestrians would be safer walking to the south side, which again is both for life safety and also allows the construction of the, or the improvements of the landscape plan, as you said, Mayor, prior to completion, the expansive sidewalk, the trees, the silva cells, would all be constructed also during that time period. In addition, the project will also be relocating some light poles, again, as part of what was required by the applicable master plans. Coordination with FPNL, TECO Gas on other lines, all occurs within that five-foot area.
Okay. Commissioner, any other questions? Do you want me to ask public comment first, and then you want to wait for your comments afterwards?
Yeah, so...
You want to go now?
I'll ask a couple of questions, then we can...
I'll ask a couple of questions, and we can go to public comment. Is that all right?
So from a, so Courtney, the sidewalk, if I'm understanding it right, there's going to be tearing up of the sidewalk for work, not only to improve the sidewalk, but also infrastructure under the sidewalk? Is that...
That is correct. Lights go in different places, gas lines get run, the sidewalk gets removed, and it will be replaced with the pavers.
Okay. And this, 28 months to me seems like incredibly long. That's two and a half years. Is that, is there any way to, you know, shorten this time period?
The, the building to construct it should take two years. You know, CAST is the contractor. They built 100 East La Solas. They know the area. They are efficient with their time. But they indicate it's going to be 23, 24 months.
Okay. I guess we can, yeah, Mayor, if you want to go to public comment, then we can follow up.
Couple of people that have asked to sign up. Gary Grayson, followed by Steve Rifkin. Mr. Grayson? You have a couple minutes?
Thank you, Mayor. As part of my presentation, I have a slide. I just need to find it on your desk, on the desktop here. Oh, thank you. Or maybe I need some IT help, so. But actually, Courtney stole some of my slides, or I stole hers, so. That public record. And can you do the share? Thank you. I knew I wouldn't remember. Good evening. I'm Gary Grayson, representing the Water Garden Board of Directors. This application for a sidewalk closure is missing critical context. There were many right-of-way concerns when this project was originally approved due to its size, an almost three-quarter acre building on a three-quarter acre lot, and considering what has happened with previous developments. The latest site plan requested is completely different than the plan that was presented in 2017. So what did the city approve at that time? Here's part of the developer's presentation, a site plan with multiple luffing cranes and internal staging. And so what is that? A crane on both ends arcing inward, and all projects staging inside the building after the first two floors are finished. See the turquoise line showing the trucks driving in and out. Also here again, follow the turquoise lines driving way into the building, around and out again. The construction office is front and center on both slides, on those slides, because no staging will be done there. Cranes on the sides again. So what do they want now? One big arcing crane in the middle, and zero internal staging, zero. Everything will be front and center. This is nothing like what the city considered and proved in 2017. This will have a dramatically different impact to the thousands of more new nearby residents. Pedestrian and car traffic on this small street has like at least tripled since 2017. Instead of two or three months of staging hell, it will be two or three years. Internal staging is more important than ever. And this is just not a sidewalk closure. In the text before you, it says the city engineer can close the lane at any time at his sole discretion. The site plan in this CM8 are inseparably intertwined at this tiny location. Aluvian had two or three times the area to work with, and they spilled out on the street continuously. The city was rightfully concerned about the staging of this project. The internal staging plan alleviated those concerns. The continuation of developers presenting projects in a way to get approval but have no intention of doing has to stop, and today would be a good day, time to start. Postpone CM8 until such time the developer presents and has approval for the original internal logistics or site plan upon which this project so heavily relied on. Courtney gave an excellent presentation of internal station and staging at planning and zoning in 2017. We all gave them what they wanted the first time. Now it's time for them to want what we gave them. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
There's absolutely no doubt that this is going to be an interference with the pedestrian traffic, you know, in and around. It's obvious, there's, closing down a sidewalk is an imposition. There's no doubt about that.
And I have no opposition to that. You have to close the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to.
So, so what is, what is the accommodation you're asking for tonight?
Well, this, I believe this is called a Mott Plan, Maintenance of Traffic, is directly related to their internal staging site plan, and they have since completely changed that since 2017. Courtney showed some slides from 2017, and they, she showed that slide right there. They're completely, if you look at them, they're completely different. Look at the trucks parked out front, dead front center, no, no internal staging whatsoever, and a big giant arc of a crane around the whole thing, which before they were going to have to...
Right.
...arcing inward, arcing train.
Right. But, but tonight, the commission, and correct me if I'm wrong, tonight, the commission is only being asked to make a decision regarding the closure of the sidewalk. And if you're okay with that, everything else, I think, has to be done through staff, because the commission is not here to decide anything but the closure of the sidewalk.
What you're considering tonight is a revocable license to close the sidewalk and install the temporary crosswalks.
Right.
So you're saying, well, first off, the city engineer at his sole discretion can close a sidewalk and vehicle lane in this agenda item?
Right.
So it's not really just a sidewalk.
For a, for a period of time. When it gets up as long as 24, 28 months, it has to come to the...
And the duration of clo, and to his sole discretion, to vehicular lane and the duration of the closure, he has a sole discretion.
It's the vehicular lane that's bothering us, isn't it?
Well, yeah, because Aluvian had three times the space, and they were constantly in the street. And this is, this lot is a fraction of the size, and that's what was debated in 2017 heavily, and the internal staging was part of it. I really realize internal staging isn't exactly part of this, but you can't really separate them. I mean, in practicality here.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just, but I just want to know, I think that the city is, the city commission is only being asked tonight regarding the sidewalk. Are we being asked to also condone, condone the city engineer's discretion to also limit traffic on the vehicular lane as well?
You're being asked to consider the closure of the sidewalk with the installation of two temporary crosswalks.
That, the sidewalk?
That's correct.
But what about this vehicular lane?
You are not being asked to restructure how the site works for the purposes of construction.
Okay. Mayor, it's actually in this agenda item. That's where I pulled this from.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I just jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, so Chris, as a city engineer here, do we have, who can we talk to about this?
Portia's shaking her head, no.
No. Okay. So Courtney, what would necessitate a vehicular lane closure?
Just quickly, just to note, this is Alan Walla. Just to the mayor's point, though, that is sort of beyond the item that's before the commission tonight. So we don't want to exact any sort of conditions on the request, which I believe is supported by staff and required by the code for safety reasons.
Great, thanks. Go ahead, Courtney.
Commissioner, we're not seeking a lane closure.
Okay.
The access points to the site are in the same location as Gary and I both shared.
Yep.
And I don't believe, I didn't quite follow the comments on trucks. They still will come into the site and circulate, as was discussed, but the...
Yeah, but we don't want to, there are quite a few residents that depend on this street to get in and out. We don't want to choke them off, okay?
Correct.
And is this two-way or one-way, this street?
It's two-way.
Two-way.
Two-way, right? That's what I thought.
Two lanes.
So...
So we're not seeking a lane closure, Mayor.
Okay.
But it says that the city engineer can close the lane if necessary. Am I not reading that correctly?
I believe so, and that is not something that we are seeking.
Yeah, so let me just, let me keep working it, and then, yeah. So do you, do you have any reasonable expectation that you would need a vehicular lane closure at any point during this project, Courtney?
Not for the construction.
Okay.
I, I do know that I think the city is installing a water main, and I think there's a question about that, and I don't know where that is, but not as part of our construction.
Okay, okay. Great. So then Courtney, then to the, so no expectation of a vehicular lane closure from your perspective?
Absolutely not.
We obviously don't...
It's a temporary one, like for an hour or so. I mean, that may happen.
Sure.
Turn a truck in and out. You're not looking for a 28-month lane closure.
Absolutely not.
Okay. The city engineer, obviously, for safety and other reasons, clearly has discretion if necessitated, but it sounds like, in your view at least, there's going to be no need for that. Okay. The internal staging, so if I'm tracking Gary's comments there, Courtney...
Yes.
The, and the thinking, and Gary, maybe this is better for Gary, but the thinking there is that the two cranes will reduce the amount of traffic, of construction traffic in? I'm just trying to understand what...
And if I may, Commissioner, before Gary goes?
Sure.
So back in June and July, we reached out to Water Garden...
Yep.
Regarding construction management, and cranes were part of the discussion. I believe Mr. Grayson is now on the board. We've had several meetings with the board, which has slightly changed in composition up through, I guess, two weeks ago. And knowing that it is important to Water Garden, and was important in our agreement with the Water Garden building, that we agreed to use luffing cranes that will not swing over Water Garden property, that is still the case. What is shown is we are now only need one crane, not two. And we discussed that with their board, and that was acceptable. The important thing that was agreed to in 2017 was that they be luffing cranes, and that they not swing over the property, and that remains the case.
And what does luffing cranes mean for those?
Crane that, I guess, goes straight up, this one.
Yeah, okay.
Stand up.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Luffing crane is required, basically, because of the size of this property. Most construction cranes are straight booms, as you've seen, and the pulley goes back and forth. This crane actually arcs. As, that is really not my major concern here. But if you give me just a little bit of latitude, can I ask Courtney a question? And are you saying that after the first two floors in, you're going to completely internalize the staging of this building? Like the trucks, like on this diagram right here, they're going to drive into the building, dump their load off, and then come out again, rather than doing it in the front, as it is shown right here? Because this big red square here is a concrete hoist, and it's dead front center.
And inside the property.
Inside the building. That's not, that's not what was presented before. See this turquoise line that drives in the building and out, and this turquoise line that drives in the building and out? And this turquoise line that drives in the building and out? See, there's a construction trailer, dead front center, because they weren't going to do any staging there. Now they are. This is the first builder. They're on their third builder now.
And you also know the construction trucks are on the south side of New River Drive.
Right.
And, and come
And Mayor, just a reminder that what's before you tonight is the closure, the request to close the sidewalk and two crosswalks. The rest of the site staging is not
I know, but I just want them to feel comfortable here.
And is this staging plan going to come up again at city commission or is this it?
It will, it won't.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I suspected.
Gary, just let me, so just so I'm understanding, the concern is that staging is going to, your, your, the original site plan had staging further north on the property? Is that right?
Inside the building.
Inside. It's, it, it, the cranes are moved inward, once a certain part of the structure is, is built.
No, the trucks.
I don't think that's staging.
Trucks.
The trucks.
The concrete trucks that deliver the materials trucks. They were going to be completely internalized. What's missing on this diagram is our building is right next to it. I mean, right next to it.
Right.
Twenty-one feet away.
Right.
And people live on that corner and they were going to have to put up with the foundation of first two floors for two or three months and now they're going to have to put up with concrete trucks, dead front center, for two or three years.
Oh, so you're saying that
Big difference.
The concrete trucks were going to go into the first floor or second floor and drop off material inside the newly constructed first two floors?
Look at the turquoise line on the original coastal.
Yeah.
See, it goes way back into the building and way back out again. Courtney just showed that slide. But this is what they're doing now. Look, all the concrete trucks are dead front center and the concrete hoist is dead front
Go back to that turquoise line, let me just, just so I can understand that. Okay, all right, now I understand a little bit more. Courtney, is that making sense to you? What cares?
Yes, it is. I think it was anticipated that for a time, as construction was ongoing, there would be an appropriate clearance to get the trucks in. Now they are on the private property. They remain on the private property.
Right. And, and was, is, was this suggesting that they go farther deep north into the property, that turquoise line? And now it's, it's more shallow?
Correct.
Okay, so that was a change to the, to the staging? Is that, am I saying that right, Courtney?
Correct.
Okay. So, is it, so it's no longer possible to have that deeper staging route north into the property? Is that right, Courtney? Because of some changes to the building or?
Because of the, I believe it's the double, as you may recall, this is not split between an ALF and a traditional residence. There was a double lobby. And then in response to comments from, while the heights and podium didn't change, the building is the same, we're now, and I think you see it in the backup, we've added parking. So there are now 338 parking spaces. So as a result, that clearance, which was only going to be there for a time, is not there on the inside.
Okay, so that's the reason for the change.
But we, so we introduced, you know, additional parking at that location.
Okay.
Where there was a double lobby for the ALF and the residences.
Okay.
It was part of what was before the commission last year.
Okay, got you. Okay.
Actually, it was this year and it was a change of use and the site plan was not part of their change of use. All they asked to was to change the use and to remove the generators, correct?
Correct. And what was, what was discussed in front of the commission was taking the podium and adding the decks. That's now in for an administrative amendment.
But it, the, the stage, internal staging plan was not changed
Correct.
Or applied to be changed at, at, at the, on February the 16th.
I don't believe the staging plan changed from final DRC, but I don't know that it had that detail. But correct, the staging
All right, well, this is something that's not part of, let's, I, I, I gave you the opportunity to speak about this issue, but the staging is not really part of our agenda item right now. So, if I can ask you to have that conversation offline and, and continue the conversation with city staff to try to accommodate the neighbors, to avoid the interaction of all these construction trucks that are going to basically dominate that very narrow street, I think that's the big concern here.
I appreciate that. If Courtney will commit to the internal staging, I have no objection to this.
All right, so let, let's talk about that offline. Mr. Rifkin?
And I will certainly commit to
Actually, what we were going to present is Courtney's planning and zoning video from 2017 where she explained all the internal staging very well. It's very nicely done. And just to remind everybody, because it was almost five years ago, but at this point, I don't really, I don't really think we need to.
Okay.
And my recommendation, Mayor, is that we don't condition your action tonight to any site modifications, that your truly are acting tonight only on the closure of a sidewalk.
I get that.
And, and Mayor, Commissioner Sorenson, we will sit with our neighbors again on the staging question that they have brought up, have been doing meetings regularly. And now that I understand Mr. Grayson's comment, I absolutely will meet with him. I'm not making that a condition, Commissioner Lagar, but I, I am stating that.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Gary.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion?
Moved.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's on CM8. It's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and the item is approved. Commissioner Sorenson, CR5.
Thank you, Mayor.
Lauder Trail.
Yeah, just, Chris, just for, I'm excited about this. I think, I think this is excellent where we're heading. Maybe just for the benefit of the public, if, if we can have someone just give us a quick update. Here's where we are, here's what this means, here's what's next.
So we have
It would be great.
Ben Rogers joining us today remotely, so we'll pull him up here and he can give you a quick update as to where we are with the press, the, the project.
Wrong slide, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. The infamous words, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, perfect. So Commissioner Sorenson, what this is doing is it's, it's memorializing the plan, kind of creates the roadmap for staff to do the next steps for us to act on and implement this, this master vision. So what's next for us is right now we're in conversations with the Broward MPO on funding. There's a lot of infrastructure and, and transportation bills and, and funds that are available right now. And so we're working with them to figure out how we can leverage our $4.5 million of park bonds fund to get additional money to maybe do a larger area with our first shot. We're also working with the Pat Foundation, who was the nonprofit organization who assisted and led the master plan effort to facilitate the next steps of the project of identifying a model trail segment and working through procurement documents, bid specs, and really getting us our first segment of the trail. And then we'll be working on forming implementation team and, and looking for a friends group or, or a nonprofit agency that would advocate for this and maybe do some, some private fundraising. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Great, thanks, Ben. And with the Friends of Lauder Trail, what, how will we think about forming that or what's the, any sense there?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we'll, we'll lean on the Pat Foundation to use best practices to kind of, to get, they've already given us kind of a foundation of understanding what we need to have in a friends group, but it's, it's one of those things that we'll look for a nonprofit that has local interest, local stakeholders and a passion for this trail to move forward. I know there's been some, some different ideas out there, but at this point, we haven't solidified anything.
Okay, thanks. Is there anything we as a commission can do to help move things forward, expedite process?
So the one thing, at this point, I think accepting the plan would be, be the step and then we'll be coming back, staff will be coming back to the commission sometime in the next couple of months to look at what model trail segment we would like to implement. Each model trail segment has some pros and cons and so we'll identify all those pros and cons, make a staff recommendation and then, and seek your feedback on what you think the initial trail segment should be.
Okay, great, thanks. That sounded good. Vice Mayor, is that feeling good? I mean, we've
Yes, yes, I'm excited about it. Thank you, Ben, for working on this and for moving this forward and maybe let us know also if any FEC updates.
Oh, yeah.
Especially down in your district, Ben. Make sure, that would be great to have some right of ways.
Do we, yeah, do, how are those conversations going? Any, any update there with FEC?
Yeah, I've been meeting with FEC on a regular basis. Right now we're waiting on them to respond with what they think the financial impact could be for us to do a long-term lease for the right of way. So until we get that information, we don't know if we're talking about pennies, dollars or, or thousands.
Okay, sounds good, I guess, right?
Okay, is Ty, is Ty Tavian here? Ty has to speak. Good evening, Ty.
My name is Ty Tavian and I
Oh, sorry about that. My name is Ty Tavian and I live in District 2 in Flagler Village. I'm a strong supporter of the Lauder Trail. My background is in creating public spaces and activating public spaces and driving economic development through public art and place making. I did that primarily in Chicago and I've been living here in Fort Lauderdale the last four or five months. One of the reasons I, I'm very excited about Lauder Trail is that I believe it can really drive equity and inclusion throughout the city by connecting neighborhoods, people and cultures that, that the trail actually touches. One of the things that is important, I think, is to really also consider the economic development potential. When you look at these kind of projects that have occurred in other cities, they've really generated tremendous private sector development. For example, in Atlanta, they had invested $600 million through 2019 and that generated $6.2 billion in investment, a 10 to 1 return on that. So for all the excitement that I have for the Lauder Trail, the only thing that I want to add is I really feel that art and place making needs to be added to the budget. At this time, it is not included in the cost estimates. And when you look at creating a unique offering that we can all be proud of and tells the stories of all of the different neighborhoods that this project will touch, I think storytelling, neighborhood storytelling is crucial to that. So I would just encourage the city, as they continue to move forward with this exciting project, to really be thoughtful about the need to really tell a story and to be, you know, really animate this space in the appropriate way. All right, great, great.
Thank you, sir, for those comments. We have talked about that and that's probably where the fundraising group will come in because there are different segments of this plan that have different characteristics and personalities. Maybe it's Old Dillard Trail or the Mockingbird Trail down here in your area. So different people may have different ideas for the art and the storytelling. So we thought as a, as a government body, we would lay the infrastructure, the sidewalks, the paths, and then the private sector and fundraising can come in and maybe help embellish it a little bit and tell the story. So we have had those conversations. We look forward to you joining our conversations too with your expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ben, how are we doing on just, we've got a lot of great disparate groups that are part of this. Are we still maintaining good cohesion with all the different groups engaged in this?
So there hasn't been a whole lot of interaction over the last 60 days. If you remember, we came and, and gave a presentation to commission in October and then since that time, we were just taking the feedback we received and finalizing. And then this meeting got deferred a few times. So there hasn't been a whole lot of recent activity. Once we get it accepted, then we'll reach back out and start the conversations again.
Okay, great, thanks. Thanks, Mayor, I'll, I'll move this.
Okay, the item has been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, accepting the Lauder Trail master plan and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and the item is approved. The last item, CP3, Commissioner Sorenson, you had pulled.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. And actually, if I could just, completely unrelated to CP3 for a moment, Chris, how are we doing on, I think StanTech was doing a financial evaluation, feasibility and evaluation of Las Olas, look at funding and so forth. I think that was supposed to be ready soon.
I'd have to defer to Ben on that as well.
Right, thanks.
Yeah, Commissioner, we've finalized the initial setup of the model and we are scheduled to meet with the city manager, I think, next week or the week after to share that output with him, determine next steps and then give the commission an update.
Okay, good. All right, thank you, great. That's good. Okay, great, CP3, so whatever we're able, Chris, whatever we can share, just in terms of Five Ash and where we are and just kind of thinking about building new, you know, water treatment facility and then why we need to do this, just again, kind of process
Yeah, so I'll probably look to Omar. Am I looking at Dr. Gassman or Omar for this agenda item? Dr. Gassman. I will tell you, and she and he can update you as to what this item is tonight, I will tell you the next discussion on water treatment plant comes during the conference meeting of the eight, on the 18th, where you all have asked for Ernst &amp; Young as well as our city team to present publicly what we have been talking about in the shade related to the unsolicited proposals that we've received. We look to do that next and gauge the commission's direction from that discussion and then offer a path forward, whether we continue on that path or whether we breathe a tremendous amount of life into our parallel path, which is us, as you recall, hired an owner's representative to represent our interest in the construction of a new water plant if we choose to go that, that path instead of the accepting an unsolicited proposal. All that happens at the meeting on the 18th.
On the 18th, so we, we can, city commission can make that determination on the 18th, move forward, obviously, in the meantime, whatever that decision is, we still have to maintain and improve Five Ash.
We still have to keep this plant running until such time as we turn over to a new one.
Right.
The only reason we didn't go forward with those presentations as quick as tonight is because I really feel it's important, all five elected officials are here for that discussion.
Agreed. Okay, great, thanks. So, yeah, and just for the benefit of us all, just Nancy a little bit what this is.
Dr. Nancy Gassman, Assistant Public Works Director. The item that is before you today is the repair of a valve that is part of our distribution system. It is not inside the plant and the distribution system will continue to be an important part of providing public water supply throughout the city. And so this is really about a repair in the distribution system and not specifically about the plant itself.
Okay, great. So even if we had a new plant, this was still a, a critical repair?
It is.
Would have to be needed. Yep, great, okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Move it.
Okay, Mr. Corbin, you have asked to speak on this.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. You didn't know.
Five Ash, like any other water treatment plant, needs constant maintenance. I fully agree with spending over $850,000 on repairing this leaking valve. Over the past decade, $120 million has been taken out of the utility fund and used to run the city. That was wrong. Five Ash currently needs $100 million in refurbishments and another $70 million for state-of-the-art filtration system that wouldn't waste 5 million gallons of water per day like the proposed new water treatment plant would. A new plant would, would be four miles away in the wrong direction from Five Ash's current location. That would mean roughly $100 million in new water lines plus more chemicals added to the water for the additional distance. The city commission keeps pledging to make water and sewer a number one priority, yet the green, yellow or brown city tap water that Fort Lauderdale sells has not improved one bit in the three years since you came into office. Last week, Long Beach, California had a 7 million gallon sewage spill that closed down their beaches and made national news. Well, that's nothing. Last year, we had a 250 million gallon sewage spill, 35 times that size, which was warned about in the 2017 Rees Engineering Report. Six months ago, Rees Engineering told you to use ozone and carbon to vastly improve the filtering of city tap water. Not only would it make Five Ash water clear, but it would also allow us to stop adding us to stop adding ammonia to pass EPA safe water drinking tests. Instead of five times the allowable levels of chloroform in drinking water during free chlorination burns, which last several weeks, we would be in compliance with EPA rules. By not moving our water treatment plant into the flight path right next to the executive airport, we could use some of the $260 million saved to replace city water lines that turned green water yellow. That's exactly what happens. Dean, you told me Five Ash has to be moved, since the current building can't withstand a category-five hurricane. Could a new plant withstand a plane crash? I don't think so. A new plant using Corolla Engineering's recommended membrane filtration would cost an additional $50 million a year, just in added deductibility costs. Am I missing something here? Last city commission meeting, Commissioner Steve Glassman got upset with me for mentioning kickbacks. To be clear, I have absolutely no proof of any kickbacks given or promised to the city commission, city management, or city utility employees. However, it seems odd that none of you want to talk about engineering reports, filtration techniques, saving $260 million, or the fact that you all sell colored water to a quarter million people. The longer you stay silent about this important topic, the more people will think that something unscrupulous is going on. Can we talk about any of these issues?
Okay, thank you so much, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Is that a no?
That's your three minutes.
That's a no, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, someone like to introduce the item?
Moved, introduced.
Let's see, CP3?
Second.
It's a motion, so I need a motion and a second.
Moved, yep.
Second, okay, great. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the item is approved. So just to repeat, Mr. Lagerblum, what you said, that on our January 18th meeting, we will just be discussing all the things that we've been discussing in the shade. We will now be able to discuss it in the public. Okay, great, thank you. M1, motion approving an event agreement and extended road closure beyond 10:00 a.m. on the Barrier Island for the 16th Annual 2022 Fort Lauderdale Marathon, Half Marathon, and Fort Lauderdale 5K. Will you be running in that, Commissioner?
No, well, maybe the half. So, by the way, I did want to ask a question, because in the backup, it looks like this actually does go up to the gulf as well, through the gulf. So I think it has to say District One.
It says two and four. It doesn't say one.
I think it should say one also.
But it goes to the gulf?
I think it does go to the gulf.
We'll encourage them to stay and eat at Fish Tales, right, Kathy? Yeah, they can end there.
I think it goes from the north end to the south end of the gulf.
The south to north, that's better.
So it should say also District One as well.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M1 is approved. M2. Motion approving an event agreement and request for music exemption for Saint Demetrius Greek Festival.
Move to deny. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I think we got three vice mayors on board. Thank you.
All right, no good for the-
Next item, please.
No good for the Greek festival.
Next item, city clerk.
All right, next item.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Move to approve.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
See, when is it?
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M2 is approved. Thank you. Opa.
Let us know when you'll be there, so we can join you.
Yes, you should.
Yes, we will. I'll wear my t-shirt. You can wear yours. Did you see his t-shirts up here?
M3, motion approving an event agreement related road closures and request for music exemption for Nobi Sunday Block Party. That's District One. Any comments or, okay, someone like to introduce, or someone like to make the motion to approve the event?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is now approved. M4, motion approving a service agreement for artwork on the lifeguard towers. I wasn't quite sure what that meant. I didn't know there was artwork on the lifeguard towers.
It wasn't. These are the first, these are four of them.
This is to paint them?
No, well, actually, there'll be wraps. There was an artist selection process through our Public Art and Design Board.
I remember that.
And this was the artist that was chosen, and it will be those four towers, Tower Two, Five, Six, and Seven along South Fort Lauderdale Beach Boulevard.
So we say service agreement, we just mean the wrapping of it, correct?
Well, I think, go ahead, Chris.
It's what's needed for able to, to be able to do the work. So it's just a technical term, I guess. But this is the agreement to move forward with those first four.
Okay.
Mayor, if you don't mind, we have the artist here. I'd love to bring him forward, if that's all right, to just say hello. Come on up. Why, just introduce yourself, and if you won't mind, maybe, you know, give us your name and maybe a little bit about what you've done. And, yeah, thanks.
Hello, my name is Jurna Sherry. My name is DJ. I'm a local artist in Fort Lauderdale. Graduated from Dillard High School, Freedom Education, and Brown College. Painting murals around Fort Lauderdale and Six Trunk area, and also in Orlando for about four years now. And I also teach our two children and adults in Fort Lauderdale.
Great.
Mayor DJ has taught art classes at South Side School, at city events and stuff. So this is homegrown talent here that's going to keep doing great things.
Very nice. Well, thank you.
Thanks, DJ.
Forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Mayor, I do have a question for Chris. Chris, so also because public art, it's great, and I obviously am a huge fan, and I'm thrilled that this is happening on the beach. It'll be a great gallery that we'll create of wrapping those towers up and down. I think it's going to become actually a destination, and I think the county will utilize that in its promotional materials, and I think we'll be very proud when it's done. But maintenance, I am concerned, I just want to make sure that we have the team in place that will be working with the artists to make sure that the maintenance of it over time is taken care of, because that's just a real key component of public art. So we're prepared to deal with that, and we have the people that will be able to handle that.
We'll either handle it, or if it's ongoing maintenance that's got some professional component to it, we will, we don't want to take a nice-looking beach, and everything always looks great the day you do it. And it, you know, obviously deteriorates. Those are rough conditions out there. So, yeah, we'll make sure we work with the artists to understand what the correct maintenance is, and we'll keep them looking good.
Okay, that's great. So this is the first four, and I can't wait for every single one of those towers to be wrapped by an artist. It's going to be very exciting. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is approved. Now we have the part of the meeting called Neighborhood Presentations. There are three people tonight who have signed up to speak, and we allow each person four minutes in which to give their neighborhood presentation, their neighbor presentation. And tonight, we start with Mary Fertig, who would like to discuss public lands. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
As 2022 begins, we hope, and I came a couple months ago and spoke on behalf of Lauderdale Tomorrow about public lands. We talked about the fact that so many of our lands are disappearing in our county and as we get built out. And so I know for several years, we've come before you, and we've asked if the city could develop, if you all would consider developing a policy or philosophy for the use of public lands. And I know this isn't a new request. I know we've asked many times, but this is a new year, and this is a good time to make New Year's resolutions. So we're hoping that you'll, one resolution that you'll make this year is to develop a philosophy of public lands, or another way of saying that would be to develop a policy for the use of public lands. The Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines public lands as land owned by the government. The Cambridge Dictionary defined public lands as land that is owned by the government. One's a government, the other's the government. And in fact, in the United States, typically, you have public lands that are owned by the federal, state, and city government. Now, this may be boring, but I looked up some statistics. You know, there are 227, 2.27 billion acres in the United States, and of that, 640 million acres are federally managed lands. So the federal government has a plan. And actually, I was really interested to find that the state of Florida has 34.7 million acres, of which 13.07% belongs to the federal government. The state also has a division of lands, of state lands, where they discuss acquiring lands and providing oversight for management and so forth on more than 12 million acres of public lands, including lakes, rivers, and islands. So, and they state on their website, these public lands help ensure Florida residents and visitors have the opportunity to truly appreciate Florida's unique landscapes. So now we come to Fort Lauderdale. So our request is simply the same idea that I know you have a wonderful parks and rec website, and you can go on that. You can see the park, you can see the size, you can see where it is. You can find all kinds of information. I know when I've talked about several issues involving public lands over the years, I've written my district commissioner to ask them if they could help me find information about public lands. Originally, that was Mayor Trentalis. Now it's Commissioner Glassman. Their offices have always been great, but wouldn't it be wonderful if we had a website that had all of this information on it, that talks about the who, what, where, when, why of how of public lands, you know, that tells us where our lands are and what they're for and so forth? You could establish guidelines for acquiring lands, determining the use of the land, whether it's going to be a park, open space, affordable housing, whatever. There are many different ways that you can, and I've heard all of you talk about this, all of the different ways that you can use the lands that we own. So it would be great to have that reduced to a policy, philosophy-type statement where you outline it all, and it gets its own section on the webpage. So that's why I'm here tonight, asking you once again if you would develop an overarching policy for public lands, a philosophy of what we, as the city of Fort Lauderdale, believe our public lands would be used to be used for. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Mary, can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
Thank you for all that. You always do such a great job researching. We appreciate it. Is this different from a P3 ordinance that we were discussing also, and our city attorney was looking into, meaning the city of Fort Lauderdale drafting an ordinance?
A P3 ordinance, yes.
So it's different. This is a whole new idea.
We own, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Lagerblum, to say, to ask this question. How many acres of land do we own? I don't know. Just say a lot.
A lot.
Okay, thank you. We own, we own lands, and sometimes when those lands come before you, you hear a P3 proposal. Sometimes you have a lease. Sometimes it's a park. Sometimes it's just open space. I mean, there are a lot of different ways. Sometimes you may say, oh, we have this piece of land, and wouldn't it be better utilized instead of sitting there as open space to be affordable housing, for example. There are a lot of different ways, but what would be good is to have an overarching philosophy of what you believe public lands should be used for, and then develop the guidelines and so forth on how you would use public lands. And I know this would take a little bit of time, but I think you'd find that you have one policy over here for surplusing lands, and maybe something else over here for parks and recs. And what we're suggesting is that there be one overarching policy which impact, which governs the use of our public lands. And I don't even know what our public lands are worth, but I think that would be a really good thing to know, too.
Interesting. So we have our goal-setting workshop coming up at the end of January, and I'll bring that up and follow up on your idea with the rest of the commission, and we can kind of hash it out a little bit more there.
Thank you.
And see what we can come up with, even if it's a list of archiving what we have, because I really don't even know the inventory. So, all right, thanks, Mary.
Thank you so much.
All right, great, thank you.
Mayor, I just want to also ask, Chris, and I think that's a great idea, Mary. I really, I like that idea of having that kind of philosophy and policy, because, you know, many times, we even see parcels come in front of us, and people bid on parcels of our own land, and we just, you know, sell them, and maybe we even look at those parcels as pocket parks in the different neighborhoods. I don't know, but I like the idea. I think it's great. I think we, I think we should. I mean, we have large tracts of land that we, you know, we, affordable housing, Mary mentioned. There were so many uses of our public land. So I think that overarching philosophy and policy is maybe a good idea, and I really would like to see us look at those little parcels that we sometimes just sell right away, and maybe we can do, just make some little open space, pocket parks in neighborhoods. But I like the idea. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Even without committing it to, you know, committing it in writing and memorializing it in some document, I know, I've watched this commission now for the last several years, and I think, you know, the idea of putting it in writing is fine, but I know that this commission has a sense of how public land should be. There's no one solution to the best use, the highest and best use of public land. It depends on the, it's a situational determination. Sometimes it could be used for affordable housing. Sometimes it can be used in a public-private partnership in which the city benefits either by a structure being built on it, which it owns, or whether it derives rent from it, or whether it's just simply open space for people to enjoy with unfettered access. So there are all kinds of, you know, ways that I've seen this commission have their sense of what's right, and I know will continue to do so. But I guess ultimately, memorializing it would be one way of at least giving future commissions the opportunity to rely upon the philosophy that we may create, keeping in mind that all future commissions can change that philosophy. But, but at least it would give some direction to the next generation as to what we were thinking at the time when we made our decisions. So, so your point is well-taken, and we appreciate your coming tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said, and I think great idea. Chris, could we, would it be possible, over time, to develop a map with all city-owned properties geolocated on it?
It's just a layer in our GIS system. Yes, very easy, very quick.
Perfect. And then maybe put that on the city website somewhere?
It may already be.
Okay.
But-
Even better, and that could at least be-
Yeah, that's not a, that's not a difficult thing to do.
That could at least be a starting point that's updated regularly, and then it would help me at least to look at it and think more strategically than at least I've been doing it.
It's easy to make highlight everything that has the city of Fort Lauderdale's owner.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Leanne Barber, who wants to speak on the One Stop Shop.
Oh, sorry, Mayor, she's coming up, and I think Vice Mayor raised this, the P3 ordinance, I think Alan was, like, looking into that, or he was, Alan, were you, are you working on that?
We are. We've collected and researched some studies throughout Florida that have passed some, so we're trying to put something together for you.
Okay, great, thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Happy New Year, Leanne.
Happy New Year. So everyone here is, I'm thinking, they're coming to talk about the One Stop Shop. We have a good attendance tonight. We've been-
Well, you always draw a crowd, yeah.
Yes, the One Stop always draws a crowd. Well, the last time we were before you was September 21st, so it's been about three months when there was a six-hour discussion about the One Stop, and we thought it would be a good time to just take a checkpoint and see where we are. And I have actually presentations to give you, but I didn't want to steal, I didn't want to steal my thunder before I did. So we know, talking about public land, a really important piece of public land is the city-owned asset called the One Stop Shop, which is located just across the street here. And it's in, it's in Flagler Village, which is near and dear to our heart, although it's shared and loved by a lot of people within the city. And the choice that you have under consideration right now is a choice to make it into a public park and a choice to make it into a P3 relationship with a company. And we believe, well, if it was a public park, it would provide municipal services to the public. It would become a neighborhood and citywide amenity, and it is in the downtown master plan. If you, if you choose to make it a, to sign a contract with a P3 proposer, it will be, you'll be trading the land for a 100-year contract worth $100 million, and it will allow the applicant to develop a privately-owned regional entertainment venue. And so we were looking back, I was trying to figure out, you know, like, a new way of really evaluating the choices that you have. And when we looked back in October 6th of 2020, 17, 15 months ago, the city decided to go forward with the P3 option, right? You were, you were all there. And it really was based on the staff recommendation to do so, and it was really because it was aligned with the city goals, of the press play goals, primarily goal number three, which was the public places focus. And the goal three was to build a healthy and engaging community, and the objective was to enhance the city's identity through public art, will maintain green spaces and streetscapes. And anybody that wants to reference that document can see it on the website. So with that recommendation, the commission voted four to one to go forward with the P3 analysis, negotiation, understanding. And, and that any discussion at that time of turning the, turning the land into a park was to be considered within the context of the P3. And where we are now, though, at least in our point of view, is after two years of discussion, 97 commission meetings with the lobbyists and applicant, 100, or 10 public meetings, 15 months of commission negotiation, we said, you know, how do these, how does the choice stack up when mapped against the press play goals? So we have the park option, and we have the P3 option. And understanding that we're just presenting this based on what we know the P3 to be, which is as of September 21st, because we haven't had an update since then. And we've asked, we haven't had an update of the site plan or the comprehensive agreement since September 21st. So I don't want to go through each of the goals, but you'll, but you can, I do have them mapped in our presentation, which you can take a look at. But I want to turn to goal number three, which was public places, because I think that's the one that you thought was most interest, most important in terms of what this project was going to achieve.
Well, Leanne, your time is just about up. Can you, is there something you can give to us?
Yeah, I'm going to. Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay, okay.
And really, the, to me, the P, the goal three is the most important, because goal three was to directly, goal three is all about public place and creating a healthy environment. And that, the park would directly help achieve goal three. But, and, and actually, one of the big goals that you've had on your agenda is the percentage of residents that are within a 10-mile, 10-minute walk of the park. And right now, 77% of our residents are within a 10-minute walk of a park. Doing this would enhance that, would improve that, especially when you see how many people are going to be moving into Flagler Village. The other important note that, that kind of dovetails with Mary is that only 4% of Fort Lauderdale's city land is used for parks and wreck. And then the national average is 15%. So we're really on the low side with respect to public land used for parks and wreck. So the other important thing is, this, the city attorney, Alan, has confirmed that this will not be a park, and it will not be a public land, that, that the way the comprehensive agreement is written, it will be for the exclusive use of the private operator. And there will be opportunities for the public to kind of walk into the site, but it will not be public use. So on that basis, we feel like it's really not going to help achieve goal three, it's going to actually be detrimental to goal three. And I could take you through, you know, goals four, five, and six, public safety is a big concern of ours. But the other one I want to mention, just to mention, is the city revenue issue.
Okay, you've, you've used up your.
I understand.
More than their time, please.
Understand.
Out of respect to the others, if you have something you'd like to give to us, I, please, give it to us, give it to the clerk, we'd be happy to review it.
So.
And we understand the position that you're taking tonight. Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have enough copies for all of us? Okay, great, perfect, thank you, okay. Our third presenter is Boyd Corbin, wants to talk about drinking water from Five Ash Water Treatment.
What a surprise.
Happy New Year.
Well, you could never know enough.
And here's another very unpopular P three. The City Commission has individually met with Ridgewood Infrastructure, a New York City finance company, over two dozen times. Apparently, they have put in an unsolicited bid to build a water treatment plant in the flight path of the Executive Airport to replace Five Ash as a P three. Ridgewood is using the faulty Corolla engineering report, which claims that spending $430 million is the best and cheapest way to go. Of the 17 listed employees at Ridgewood, only one is an engineer. The rest have backgrounds in finance and most are MBAs. Four people are listed as senior advisors. Industry insiders have told me that these people are all snake oil salesmen. Here's what their website says. Ridgewood Infrastructure invests in essential infrastructure in the U.S. We invest in leading companies with high barriers to entry and transformative growth opportunities. We take an active role in managing our investments and add value through the implementation of proven strategies. Through our investment strategy, we create compelling core infrastructure assets and businesses. In layman's terms, what they're saying is they will take a simple job of filtering water and will royally screw over the 250,000 water customers in seven Broward County cities who will be dependent on them in order to maximize profits for their investors. That's all they want to do. Green water currently comes out of Five Ash and it turns yellow as it goes to the beach. Ridgewood wouldn't be responsible for water lines, they could always blame bad water quality on bad city water lines. The engineers at Reese Engineering have been working with Fort Lauderdale's water and sewer systems for three decades. Over the past four years, they have devised a plan to refurbish Five Ash for $170 million, which would save $260 million over Corolla's plan. It would only take a couple of years to implement their plan, as opposed to maybe a decade to build a new water treatment plant with all the, for extra four miles a line. The city would still retain ownership of city tap water facilities if we went with what Reese is saying. We need to stop wasting time with the unsolicited bids and move forward with the Reese Plan. Commissioner Ben Sorenson, you have publicly supported a robust, new, $430 million plan. Ben, you had a conference call with Reese Engineering, the Utility Director, and Bob Bockach with the Aaron Brockovich Foundation, yet you remain silent on this issue. Why? Have you even read the engineering reports? Did you meet with Ridgewood Infrastructure? Residents have a right to know. So it sounds like we're out of the shade part of these unsolicited bids, but we're not talking about it because Commissioner Robert McKenzie is not attending this City Commission meeting tonight. Do I, do I have that right? Uh, City Manager, do I have that right?
That is correct.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay, well, good, then we're allowed to talk at, at any length of, of these unsolicited bids and any of the options, and, and really, I want to hear what you guys think of the Reese Engineering report that came out six months ago, because it's a very good alternative. It sounds like before you were talking about, we only have two alternatives, to go with the unsolicited bids, or to have the city build a new water treatment plant next to the airport. Can we talk about it?
Time's up. Time's up. Thank you for your presentation, and.
Ben, you got nothing to say? Dean won't let you talk?
This is not, this is not.
Boyd, thank you. I've got plenty to say.
No, wait a minute, wait, Ben, this is not a talk show.
Thank you.
He, he won't let you talk, will he?
Oh, no.
Okay, you can talk.
Boyd, thank you. I'm very much able and willing to talk, as I've happily met with you and as I happily continue to pursue solutions to our Five Ash, and thank you. And we'll be talking further on the January 18th.
Okay.
So join us then for more discussion. It's gonna be great, because we're gonna go in great detail into proposals and possibilities, and maybe even selecting one of them to move forward. Boyd, it's gonna be exciting.
Yeah, it should be good. Go with the Reese report, save us some money. Okay, very good, thank you so much. So that completes our neighborhood, neighbor presentations, thank you all for being part of that. R1, Resolution 1, Appointment of Board and Committee Members. Would you like to read the names into the record?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, the names to appear on the January 18th, 2022 resolution are as follows. Individual nominations, Catherine Conig, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Education Advisory Board, Erin Gaul, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And Sustainability Advisory Board, Whitney Dutton, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And we also have a consensus reappointment for the Community Services Board, Shakara Scott. If, if we can add this one to the resolution tonight as amended.
Sure.
Their term ends prior to the next meeting.
Who is, who is, who nominated her?
Uh, it's a consensus.
It's a consensus, okay.
Yes. Okay. And for the resolution this evening, Cemetery System Board of Trustees, Richard Kurtz, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Mark Antonelli, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Robert Iain, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Citizens Committee of Recognition, Ina Lee, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Paul Eichner, nominated by, I'm sorry, this is Citizens Police Review Board, Paul Eichner, nominated by Mayor Trantallas. Code Enforcement Board, Kyle Sawchuk, nominated by Commissioner, uh, Mayor Trantallas. Chris Evert, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And William Marks. For the Community Appearance Board, Kathy Schultz, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Downtown Development Authority, Stephanie Toothaker, nominated by Commissioner Glassman and Commissioner Sorenson. Dev Mwani, nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas. Economic Development Advisory Board, nominated by Aaron, oh, Aaron Barron, nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas. Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issue Blue Ribbon Committee, Charles Tattlebaum, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Historic Preservation Board, nominated, Richard Bray, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Nuisance Abatement Board, Glenn Lindsay, nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas. Police and Firefighters Retirement System Board of Trustees, Jay Scott Bane, elected employee. Sergeant Derek Joseph, elected employee, and Jeffrey Cameron. And Walk of Fame Induction Committee, Lillian Small, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Robert Lockery, nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas. And Denise Cunningham, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And that rounds it out for this evening.
Okay. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll. Any other additions or modifications there being done? Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, oh, and this was as amended, correct?
As amended, correct.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here, too, and made a part here of Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Mayor Trantallas.
Yes, and we want to thank those individuals for volunteering to participate on these boards or committees. We appreciate the sacrifice you make on behalf of, of the city and, and helping to make the community even better than it is today. Okay, now, we have three more resolutions. These are, are policy issues, so we'll take them one at a time. The first one is R2, it's a resolution supporting legislation that would authorize the prohibition of smoking on public beaches and in public parks. Purpose of this resolution is to send it to our government in Tallahassee to encourage legislators and the governor to allow individual cities and communities to be able to determine whether or not we should allow, we can allow smoking in our, in our public areas. Any questions regarding this? It was in the, if you need to read more, read the Sun Sentinel, I believe there was an article in the paper today.
Good.
Okay, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, urging all members of the Florida Legislature and Governor Ron DeSantis to support Senate Bill 224 and House Bill 105 in the 2022 legislative session, which, if enacted, would authorize counties and municipalities to restrict smoking on public beaches and in public parks, directing the city-state lobbyists to advocate in favor of Senate Bill 224 and House Bill 105 in providing for distribution severability, rescission of conflicting resolution provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trantallas?
Yes, and the resolution supporting the, the, supporting the prohibition of smoking in public beaches and in public parks has now been approved, so thank you. Now, R3, this is a resolution urging the Florida Department of Transportation to consider the tunnel as the future of commuter rail service in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Now, this resolution is being presented today as part of a conversation that is currently being undertaken by the Florida Department of Transportation, the county, the state, as well as people in our community. To give a little background on what this is about, the, the state has, is moving forward with a proposal to add commuter rail service to the existing Bright Line rail area between Miami and West Palm Beach. And by adding commuter rail service, there, there will be somewhere in the, in the order of maybe 35 to 40 more trains traveling up and down that corridor on a daily basis. What's happened is that while it may not impact other community as much as, other communities as much as Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale would be impacted for several reasons. One, we have a river that runs through our city, and the marine community, the marine industry, has been troubled by the idea of a train continuing to keep the train bridge down so often during the course of the day that it would impede their business. There's a significant amount of business upriver from the New River, and there's been a lot of discussion as to how we, how we would approach trying to deal with the train traffic that would cross the river. Moreover, there's a, a good deal of consternation of how train traffic would also impede vehicular traffic as we now see it in Fort Lauderdale. As many of you know, there's, there's quite a bit of vehicular traffic on Sunrise Boulevard, Broward Boulevard, and Davie Boulevard, as those are the main arteries that come into the city from the western parts of the county. With that in mind, there's been some discussion as to, as to how, what's the best approach to trying to introduce methodologies to best accommodate the needs of the marine industry as well as those that live and work in and around the Fort Lauderdale area. The Florida Department of Transportation came up with ideas of building a bridge through this middle of the city. This, they've come up with three different alternatives, a tall bridge, a medium-sized bridge, and a low, and a lower bridge, each having both benefits and, and consequences depending upon the height of the bridge and, and how it would impact the, the neighboring communities that it would be built under. When this commission found out that they were considering putting a bridge through the city, it became, we became quite concerned, at least I personally became quite concerned, that a, a bridge was going to adversely impact our city in a very, very bad way. It would divide communities that have long since been divided, it would completely destroy certain neighborhoods permanently, and it would run right through the middle of our redevelopment area that we're trying to, we're trying to, to build, huge amounts of money are being invested, both the city, the county, as well as private investment. And it was beginning to make no sense whatsoever. And, and in particular, we have been working together with the county, as you know, to build a joint government center right next door, right across the street here, and, and any proposed bridge would, would run right up against that building. So I have been meeting for the last couple of years with county and state officials, as well as with federal officials, to try to determine what's the best solution. And, and in considering the, the options, I personally, and I believe this commission has, on more than one occasion, supported the idea of a train tunnel rather than a bridge solution as the best approach to trying to deal with the additional train traffic that would run as a result of this commuter rail service. So I thought it was important that this commission go, actually go on the record officially supporting a train tunnel. And, and why I'm particularly concerned about this commission putting itself on the record is because I've been receiving a number of communications from the Florida Department of Transportation, and, and within the last two weeks, I've gotten several communications, which I want to share with you tonight. On December 22nd, which was about a week and a half ago, I received a letter from Jerry O'Reilly, who's our District Ford Department of Transportation Secretary, who, who asked, the letter was addressed to me, asking me for detailed cost estimates for what it would cost to, to build a tunnel through the middle of our city. Now, I want to point out to you that when this proposal was first made to the, to FDOT, FDOT came back and decided that it would cost four, it would cost about $4 billion to build a tunnel through the middle of our city. We realized that that was a preposterous number, but they insisted that was the true and accurate number. So we took it upon ourselves to, to seek other information from, from contractors and engineering companies that actually build tunnels. And lo and behold, we came back with prices that are nowhere near $4 billion, but range anywhere between $700 million and 1.5 billion. That's a significant drop, significant drop, from what was first proposed by the Florida Department of Transportation. But as you can imagine, they rejected those, those rejected those price, uh, what's the word I'm thinking of, proposals, and, and now they've come around and realized that maybe they're, they're much more accurate than they originally thought. In fact, they now believe that a tunnel would cost anywhere between 1.5 and 1.8 billion. So we're making significant progress, keeping in mind that we're not just talking about the construction costs of building this transit over our roadways and over our, and, and under our river. We're talking about the social costs. How will this impact our community if we were to build a bridge right through it, as opposed to a tunnel underneath it, allowing for open space, greenway, and, and connecting neighborhoods that have long since been divided between the east and the west sides? So I received this letter, and somehow the department thought that I was going to get back to them within a couple of back to them within a couple of days with cost figures, which, which is impossible. Nonetheless, we got a letter just, just right before this meeting, sent by Jerry O'Reilly again, and strangely Bertha Henry, who's the county administrator, saying, you know, we haven't heard back from you, and, and we understand that there's a, a resolution on your agenda tonight talking about your support for a tunnel, and they're asking that we do not do this tonight because we should keep our options open to allow for a bridge. Personally, I don't think a bridge is ever going to be an option, and only a tunnel should be the alternative. And what concerns me about their trying to pretend like they're acting in good faith is another letter that, that we received that came in between these other two letters on January 4th. And in this letter, also from the Florida Department of Transportation, they said, oh, we're going to start, we're going to resume our public workshops, our public workshops, which I have attended several that have been sponsored by the Florida Department of Transportation, and, and they said that we're going to continue with those public workshops and for the purpose of studying a new crossing over the New River. The very words, "a new crossing over the New River," they obviously show their hand. They have no intentions of discussing a crossing under the river. So, despite the fact in their protestations that we have not been open-minded and that we are not, we are not trying to, to determine in an affair and open-minded way what the best alternatives are, they clearly show that they have no desire whatsoever to ever even consider a tunnel, when in their own language, they're only talking about a bridge. And we have further information tonight that we've, we've uncovered, that it's their game plan that in February of this year and into March, they're going to proceed through the County Commission and the Metropolitan Planning Organization, of which I and Commissioner McKenzie are members, to push through the bridge alternative and to completely ignore and sidestep the tunnel alternative. This is why it's important, I think, tonight that we, as a commission, be on record to support a tunnel alternative. Doesn't mean that we, that doesn't mean that we can certainly keep our options open, but this, this member of this commission will never, ever accept a, a bridge alternative. It would destroy our community, completely sever our city in half. And the other people who have agreed with me, believe it or not, are people at the federal level. We had a meeting earlier this year with our Department of, our Secretary of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg, and his staff, in which he completely agreed that a, a tunnel alternative is the only alternative, and that a bridge does not, is not consistent with the Biden administration's idea of building back better and connecting neighborhoods. He was very clear. In fact, his very words to us were, this is music to his ears, to hear that a tunnel alternative is the approach that we're seeking as a city. Our, our state representatives have also worked with us and believe that a tunnel alternative is the best approach. Our federal representatives, including Congressman Ted Deutsch, also believe that a tunnel alternative is the only approach. So, tonight is the reason why I'd ask, I'm sorry I went on and on about this, but I feel that there should be some context in why this resolution is being suggested to the commission tonight, so that we are on record as understanding that, that the tunnel is the only way that we can accept a commuter rail service that could run through the City of Fort Lauderdale. Otherwise, we may as well just hang it up and just say all the work that we've done to try to improve our downtown and to create a viable, sustainable environment in which, in which people can live, work, and play and enjoy the open space that we try to create as well as the, the excitement that we've been able to build into the, to all the new investment, would just completely go down the drain. And what that means for the future of our joint government center also is put in question because I could never favor a bridge right up against a new government center. If we're going to do a joint government center, it would have to be in a completely different location. So, those are my thoughts. I open the floor. I guess we'll start with Vice Mayor. Do you have any thoughts on this particular?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple. So, I just want to clarify your thoughts because I think I heard two different ones. I just want to make sure that if we do pass a resolution, that we're not saying that the tunnel is the only option.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that the tunnel is the only option. The resolution says that we support the tunnel option, so, so I guess we're precluding any other option. That is correct. That's the way it's written, is it not? Alan, is that, is that not correct, Alan? We're, we're precluding the other options by passing this resolution?
Yeah, well, this resolution doesn't have the force of precluding anything. I mean, obviously, it, the way it's worded obviously has meaning to whoever's going to be reading it, but it doesn't bind you in any way, shape, or form.
Okay.
Okay, because I do believe, maybe with the conversations that are still ongoing with FDOT and the county and the workshops, I do believe saying something so strongly at this point that this is the only option we support may be a little premature because we need, we definitely need an option. I believe we all 100% support the idea that you even brought to us of a tunnel as being the best option, but if it didn't work out for whatever reason, I mean, I could, I could live with a bridge. I just think we have to have one or the other. I don't want to lose everything, so that's just my first thought. I'm thankful that the feds support the tunnel process or idea also, but are the feds giving the state the money? Because if the feds give the state the money, then we really are playing ball with FDOT and the county and the state.
We would be seeking federal funding to, they would provide half the money and-
Directly to us, or the?
To the project, yes.
Directly, or does it come from NPO and FDOT? You know, I'm just wondering the flow of the money, who actually makes the decision to distribute?
Well, the, the US Department of Transportation would make the decision as to the amount of money that they would fund, and they indicated that their normal, their normal guidelines is they provide half the money, and then we would have to provide, we, meaning state, county, city, would have to provide the, the other half match.
Okay, so maybe they, they do have a little bit more power to designate-
Yeah.
-the, the money towards the project that they choose. Okay, so that's good, that's good to know. I, I know sometimes maybe it doesn't always work that way. Okay, so, it's my also understanding, I want clarification on this when we talk about it. So, I, I read a little bit about the BCR. I guess that's what we're calling it now. That was the coastal link. Now, it's BCR, Broward Commuter Rail.
Yeah.
Is that something like that? So, okay, so that line and Bright Line would be this option that we're talking about, bridge or tunnel, correct?
Correct.
But the freight, that has to stay the same because that is not able to go over or up because of the weight limitation?
No, I'll tell you this, I'll tell you the story behind that. A, there are freight tunnels everywhere in this country, and, and, and the only difference between a, the passenger rail and the freight rail is the gradient you would have to create in, as you go underground. But it's, it's done everywhere in the country. Freight travels underground. The concern that the FECI has, which is the operator of the freight line and the owner of the freight line, is that they're concerned about, they're, they're thinking that, let's say, a, an accident happens somewhere in the country, and the federal government decides to put a stop to all underground freight transportation. They do not want to have to go on to the western tracks, which they don't own, and have to pay money to use those tracks. Right now, they own the tracks on the east side, and therefore, it's, it's a, it's a cost-saving measure to stay on the east side. There's, there's no evidence whatsoever that going underground is any less or, or more impactful from a safety point of view by putting freight underground. And it's strictly a business decision that they have made based on the potential that something could happen. And, and honestly, we are looking forward this spring to finally get to meet with the executives of, of FECI to see if we can come to some kind of conclusion. My concern is, and the reason why I'm, I, I had asked for this resolution today, is because FDOT had indicated last fall that they wanted to make their decision as to which choice, which option they were going to make this week. They were going to do it this week. And so, if they're, now, if they're changing that, there's no indication anywhere from any information that we have received that they intend to, to change that. But the reality is that they're planning to forge ahead, and they're going to barrel through, you know, our community and make their decision irrespective of what the community wants. And let me tell you, there's another example. Remember, remember a couple of years ago when they wanted to build that pedestrian bridge over the last, over the New River, and no one knew about it, and they were going to spend millions of dollars just investigating it, and, and, and no one knew why they wanted to build it, except for the fact that the school board just happened to obliquely mention that there are some kids that have to walk south of the river to get to school? I mean, it was, and, and once we got involved, we, they realized that the community did not want it. So, the, so the community must once again speak. The community was, must once again put on record what its, what its beliefs are. And, and honestly, Vice Mayor, I just feel that if we ever build a bridge through the middle of our city, can I just give you an example of what the bridge is going to look like? A 55-foot bascule bridge, which is what they're planning on, that's the mid-range bridge, not the tallest, not the, not the lowest. The mid-level 55-foot bascule bridge is the equivalent of the 17th Street Causeway Bridge. So, that's what we're looking to put right through the middle of our city, the 17th Street Causeway Bridge. And not just, not just the length that you see 17th Street now, because that can accommodate cars, but you have to have a very, very gentle gradient for, for passenger rail to be able to go that high. So, you can imagine the bridge, how far it's going to go north and how far it's going to go south, and it's going to completely cut through the middle of our city.
Right. I, I do agree with what you're saying. I just have heard that the, the freight may need to stay the same, and then the passenger would be this other-
I've heard that also.
So, so we're not really sure exactly what that bridge would look like yet, because it might not be the freight, so maybe the gradient and the length and everything isn't really determined yet.
Well, the freight bridge would stay the same.
Right.
Nothing would change.
Right, so, we're just talking-
If that were the case.
Okay, we're, but we're still talking about a train.
So, this bridge would be, this bridge would be built off of the current tracks. It would then have to go and buy land for the entire length of the bridge.
Right, but you're saying it's still a train. It's just a commuter train. I, I do, I do want you to know 100% support the tunnel and, and your idea. I, my concern is that I don't want to send them message that it's either this or nothing, and I don't want to be left with nothing. So, I'm concerned about that. So, I, I do want to communicate that we support the tunnel, but can we do that and say, but we're also open to Plan B? Or can we ask FDOT to maybe come give us a presentation? I mean, I'm glad they've had a lot of public presentations, but maybe we need to have one amongst ourselves with FDOT also in a conference meeting and, and discuss it and just see what the options are. I, I mean, maybe calling a meeting to discuss things and really getting all the information may-
They have been having these public workshops.
That's not us.
The three of them.
Right, and I'm thankful that you have attended, but I think this is such a big issue that they probably should have one with us directly, and, and maybe have one with the county directly. Maybe it's the joint government center convenes to meet with FDOT about the bridge that might be next to our new building. I, I don't know. I just think we need to have more of a conversation. I would like to talk to the county elected officials. I'd like to talk to all of us and have the same information presented, and then discuss what the elected officials want. I know they've done the public meetings, and I think that's maybe a little bit more for the benefit of the public and other stakeholders. I think we need a, a, a meeting with us and the county.
Okay, just so that you know, I've, I've done all of that, and I, I took it upon myself. I've spoken with our county commissioners, and I've spoken with other members of the county commission that don't represent the city. And, and every, I haven't spoken with every single one yet, but the ones that I have spoken with are very supportive of our position, just so that you know that. And, and, and I would encourage everyone on this commission to go ahead and do, do the same. Go and speak with the county commissioners and to get a feel for, you know, what's important to us as a community, because they're planning, whatever they decide is going to impact us for the next 100 years.
Right. I mean, even, I think it was County Commissioner Beamford that also said, you know, even having the mobility plan kind of tied into the joint government center, you know, maybe we need to have a little bit more of a transportation conversation with the county because we are the county seat, and, and kind of have our collective vision. I appreciate what you're saying, meeting with them each individually, but I actually gain a lot more insight when I hear you all bounce ideas and, and when we discuss it collectively as opposed to one-on-one. So, I don't know. I, I just, I feel like I need that conversation. Maybe I'm the only one.
I agree.
I'll pass, I'll let you guys talk.
Well, what conversation is it that, who would be part of this conversation?
Well, I think the county because I see their name on it, and I think they're giving us some money. So, I, I'd like to talk to the people with the money. You know what my kids do when they need something? They call their dad, really. But, so, I'd like to sit down with the people that have the money, and it's not you all. Maybe, maybe it is. Do we have any money for this, Chris? I'm talking to the wrong people. Who are the people that hold the money?
There's going to be a lot of contributors to this project.
Right, well, let's at least get the big ones. I see FDOT and Bertha on there.
Commissioner Sorenson's going to be using Bitcoin for this.
Bitcoin. Maybe we need to call them. Maybe.
Well, I also want you to know that I've had a conversation with our comptroller, Jimmy Petronas, and I met with him, I had lunch with him last year. And, you know, so he writes the checks, and, and he's, so he's the guy with the money, but he wouldn't, he doesn't allocate the money, you know, it's obviously a state legislature and the governor. And, and so we'll continue to have conversations with these folks. Mr. Petronas is, is very, very inclined to agree with the tunnel approach. As I explained it to him, as I explained to everyone tonight, the, the pros and the cons of each, of each alternative. Tonight's resolution says the City Commission directs the city's state lobbyists to advocate against a bridge options, but, and in favor of construction of a tunnel as the local preferred alternative. So, it's just basically framed in the preferred alternative. It's not all or nothing.
Is there maybe one sentence in there that could at least protect this Plan B? Or I, I just don't want to send the message that we will not consider anything else. I don't want to lose everything. I don't, I don't know why I'm feeling nervous about that.
When we say also that we will consider- Commissioner Glassman, you have any? No, I, well, I, I want to just continue along the lines that the Vice Mayor started, but when we say that we will consider, what is our role in this eventually, Chris? I mean, what is our, what's our purview here? What, what does our input even matter?
Well, I think you're, you go in on the record with a preferred alternative. I think number one sends a strong message. Number two, I think it would influence, and of course, time would tell, but it would impact how we would perceive, all the way to the federal government, to the, to the state and the county government. If, if we're on the record saying a bridge is going to divide our city in half, that is something that speaks very strongly at all levels of government right now against that type of-
But I mean, at, at what point, when, if this does move forward, at what, what is our role in the whole process?
The, the role is, if I can answer that, that we've been, we've been told that no decision's going to be made if, if, contrary to what a municipality wants for its, for its, for its community, so-
So, then if, if no tunnel, and by the way, I agree with the Vice Mayor, I'm 100% behind you on the tunnel, but if that, for whatever reason, doesn't happen, then is, like you like to say, is doing nothing an option? Is, are we left with nothing at all?
Well, you're, you're left with, well, the question is, how important is the commuter rail line to the City of Fort Lauderdale? And what, what burden are we prepared to accept in order to allow this rail line to, to exist between Miami and West Palm Beach? That's, it's really the question. And, and, and looking at the consequences, for example, the bridge would cut right through our historic district and completely destroy the historic district because it would sit right over it. It would cut right through Flagler Village. It would, it would also impact a lot of the new development along Progresso, the Progresso Neighborhood. These, this bridge would cut right through those neighborhoods because that's where it would be, that's the land that they would have to buy on the west side of the current tracks. So, you're, you're asking yourself, well, what's the alternative? Well, if you feel that that is a reasonable alternative in order to secure a commuter rail service, I guess we're just going to have to agree to disagree. I don't think that anything is that important, that we would destroy our city that we've been creating for the last two generations and being so successful that we have been in this city, and all of a sudden to implement a commuter rail system that may or may not even work, I just don't think that, I don't think it's a reasonable option. I think that they, that they should go out of their way to try to help a city get through this process and not, not be at odds with us. And I feel that every time we, we move forward, they're always closing a door on us, and, like I said, they've revealed their hand in their letter of, of January 4th that was sent to us, where they specifically said that they're, they're, they're going to start all these new- all these new public workshops to discuss the six stations as well as the the new crossing over the river. I mean, there couldn't be any clearance in black and white that they have no intentions of really considering a tunnel, despite their lip service to us from time to time in text messages and conversations. Nowhere has they have they ever said that they are prepared to seriously discuss a tunnel alternative. In fact.
Let me ask you a question, though. When you mentioned earlier that, you know, folks that you've spoken to in the state, I mean, federal, state, county, everyone is saying, yes, tunnel. So.
Except FDOT.
Well, I know. But so there's no one. I mean, FDOT is the Florida Department of Transportation. So there's no one in the state of Florida that seems to be saying yes to the tunnel that has any influence at all with FDOT. I mean, FDOT is so autonomous that there's no controlling FDOT by any.
We're working. We're working on that. We've been working with our with our state representative, Chip Lamarcus, who has been who has been working with us and sees the importance of of having a tunnel over a bridge option. And and over now that the legislature is in session, there's been discussion about going up to Tallahassee to discussing this directly with the secretary in Tallahassee and discussing this directly with the governor and and to and to, you know, make our make our our positions heard and 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 accepted. And I think that I think that a loud voice from our city in form of a resolution is what we need, is the is the what I need in hand to be able to push this alternative forward. If we're mealy-mouthed about it, they'll say, oh, well, they're not really decided amongst themselves, so we can do what we want. There's no unanimity there. Let's just let's just ignore them. And and I just think that, you know, honestly, this would be a complete detriment to our city. And I I have to say that I could never ever support a government center that would be built on that site where where a bridge would run right up against it. So, I mean.
Letter in the letter that we received this afternoon from the county and also from FDOT, they said before we pass something like this, they wanted to meet with us. So and I I agree with Vice Mayor. I do think that that would be a good meeting to have in a conference meeting situation. I think that's important. I have met with them. Vice Mayor, did you meet? I mean, I did meet with them a couple of months ago.
Was that FDOT?
Yes, about this project. Did you meet?
No, I did not. Yeah, no. Did they call you? Did you call them? No one called me.
Can I can I just say, this last paragraph is completely dis is completely disingenuous. The detailed cost as they want to see that, as noted in the attached December 22 letter, okay, the detailed cost estimate of a tunnel alternative was provided to the city with an offer to meet with the city's tunnel experts, and we've not heard back. Well, by the way, it's Christmas and New Year's. Obviously, you know, for them to even suggest that somehow we're dragging our feet is 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 really bad taste. And that's why it was important to bring this forward tonight before the City Commission, so that the the Florida Department of Transportation and this so-called Broward Commuter Rail, which is which this this is this is not real stationary, by the way, this is just made up on someone's computer. And then all of a sudden, Broward County is signed on this. And I know Bertha Henry, you know, she's her heart's in the right place, but her commission has not at all voted on anything. And for her to even attach herself to a letter like this suggesting that, you know, that she's directing policy for her commission, I think is really inappropriate. So.
Which letter dated letter are you looking at now?
The January 5.
Oh, today's? Okay. I didn't I didn't see that for the last paragraph, but.
Yeah.
Okay, because I, again, I'm reading it, and I regardless of what we do, I do think that we have to have a meeting with these folks as 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 a as a city commission.
I agree with 100%.
I think it's really, really important.
But I'm afraid that they're going to go ahead and make a decision while they're like they're giving us lip service.
It says the BCR project team will be making a recommendation of a locally preferred alternative, LPA, to the Broward County Commission, which will be based on the technical evaluation of the new river crossing alternatives, financial analysis of the alternatives and station locations, along with consideration of stakeholder input. Limiting to only one alternative for the crossing at this stage could jeopardize commuter rail for the region. I don't know why they make that leap to why limit. In other words, if we say we only want a tunnel, why does that jeopardize? They say it jeopardizes commuter rail for the region. Chris, any idea why they make that leap or that conclusion?
I'm going to have to refer back to the letter. Can you can you say that again?
Well, basically, they're saying that they will be presenting this to the county commission. They'll be making a recommendation of a locally preferred alternative to the commission, county commission, based on, you know, everything. And then it's saying to us that limiting to only one alternative for the crossing at this stage could jeopardize commuter rail for the region. Why? Why is?
Because they're saying they probably won't.
I think that's indicating that if 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 it truly is a tunnel and there is no bridge option, a no build of the commuter rail could be a possibility, I think, is what that's intended to be.
And also, if we do nothing, wouldn't the commuter rail for us at least just stay? I mean, the tracks aren't going anywhere, right? I mean, we just we would just have status quo, right?
No, that's not right.
What's going to happen?
You're saying, what if if we did nothing and they did commuter rail?
Well, another well, we still there are the tracks are.
They're going to build something to traverse the the river.
Yes.
So right now, they're headstrong on on just build going ahead and building a bridge because they only know bridges. Tunnels are not in their wheelhouse. So when we presented the tunnel alternative, they saw red, and and they came up with this ridiculous number of $4 billion to scare everybody away. If it wasn't for the work of of my staff and and others who, you know, on the on the Broward Workshop, who were able to pull together realistic quotations, we finally brought them to the table, kicking and screaming, and letting them know that, you know, they're not the only ones coming up with with documentation and information to allow us to make a an informed decision. Ultimately, the MPO is going to be participating in that decision. And I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of support for a tunnel with regard to this commuter rail service, a lot of support. And so and I believe that the Broward Workshop, also, there's a lot of support. And also, the the alliance and and there's a tremendous amount of 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 effort right now to try to to try to understand, you know, why FDOT is insisting on bridges when, in fact, they know the consequences of what a bridge would do to the middle of our city if it was ever built.
Why do you think there is that resistance? I mean, you've been dealing with this now for a while. And if if all of these entities that you've mentioned are saying, tunnel, tunnel, I'm still trying to wrap my head around, why is this such resistance from FDOT?
Money, money.
I don't know. It's just money.
It's money.
But it's not just construction costs that we have to consider. It's the it's the social costs that this is going to impact us. Alan Hooper, who's who's the Chair of the Citizen Committee on the One-Cent Sales Tax for the county, wrote a beautiful letter a couple of weeks ago to Jerry O'Reilly, saying, a tunnel is absolutely the only alternative we can consider, because we shouldn't just be looking at social costs, at construction costs, but also social costs, and how it's going to negatively impact the city of Fort Lauderdale. It was a beautiful letter. I can get you a copy of that. But, you know, he's an investor in our city as well as a concerned citizen. And he, too, amongst others, are very concerned about what a bridge would do to impact the city of Fort Lauderdale.
Mayor, can I jump in?
Yeah.
So, number one, I like coming in strong. And I was, along with you and others, was I was encouraging us to put our position on the table and draft a resolution like this that somehow articulated how we feel. And I personally think a tunnel is the right way to go. Additionally, I'm a big believer in in talking through and, you know, partnering effectively, as I know we all are. So what I think would make sense is, could we, at our next conference meeting, January 18, 1:30, could we have FDOT come, invite Chris, possibly Bertha Henry, she's open and available for us, and even even reach even farther, maybe County Mayor Udine, but come to our commission meeting, talk through where we are, where they are, and, you know, at least better understand where we're going. And then at that point, after that discussion, Mayor, depending how we feel, how that goes, then we can continue to preserve our our desire if we want to put out a public resolution like this.
Well, first of all, I don't know if they would come, number one, especially since I think they have their county commission meetings on the same day we have our city commission meetings, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're a little bit screwed up this week because we went Wednesday instead of Tuesday. So I'd have to I'd have to look. But they they do tip they meet the same day of the week we do.
Yeah.
Could we have a joint meeting like we did have done before, just publicize it and go over there?
Well, yeah, I mean, open to that. Alternatively, Mayor, even if Bertha and County Mayor Udine couldn't attend, I think just us and FDOT would be phenomenal. And and just, again, conversation, sharing exactly what you shared and and continuing the possibility.
We can certainly make the offer.
Okay, yeah.
But at some point, we I, you know.
I agree. We got to. Yes, 100%. We got to execute. We got to move forward.
All right. So if not, so we'll defer this till the next meeting.
Yeah, 18.
We need to make a decision.
Yes.
If we're serious about what we're trying to do.
I'm with you. So, Chris, then, can you explore?
So what I'm going to ask now, because we just get to a function of how much I can pack into one day.
Right.
Is we already have multiple groups traveling into town to talk about water plant. I anticipate that to be a fairly extensive conversation. If I move the water quality update that we had earlier planned for today to the 18 and put this on as well, I might suggest that we try to convene at 1:00 at 11:30 instead of 1:30.
Just have a lunch.
Correct. I just don't know if I can pack that much into.
What day? But what day are we doing the Citizens Police Board? Is that that day at 11:30 or no?
Not the 18. I've got, and my calendar could be wrong, joint workshop with Northwest Progressive Flagler.
I have on the 18.
On the 18?
Does CPR be on the 18 as a joint meeting?
We could we could probably change that.
Yeah, if we could change that.
It's not time sensitive.
I think we should have FDOT at 11:30. I mean.
So important. I agree.
Yeah, it's important.
Commissioner Glassman.
Northwest Progressive CRA was a joint meeting?
Well, I.
I think this probably has more timeliness to it than than that does. So we'll work with the Clerk's Office to suggest a moving of that meeting from the 18. And we'll make an invite to FDOT for them to attend here on the 18 at 11:30.
That'd be great.
I think it would be good to respond to the letter that we did receive, you know, today at 5:00 and just, you know, thank you.
I agree. But I wanted to wait until this commission made a decision tonight, because that would that would indicate to me, you know, what I what should be said. Now, keep in mind, the letter that was given to sent to sent to me on December 22 wants cost analysis and breakdowns and all that. Well, I'm, you know, that's unfair to expect, you know, the city to jump like that and to be able to have, you know, the specific amounts, especially since, like I said, they've already been given this stuff.
Right.
So we'll be we'll be happy to provide it again. Our staff will pull together the documentation and the and the proposals that have been made by the various. There were three particular companies that did make proposals, so we're happy to resend them to to FDOT. But but the point is that, you know, this statement, I think, could be the beginning of that dialogue. So we'll 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 respond.
Well, I think the statement that's important is it says, we respectfully request deferral of your proposed action to eliminate alternatives until we have an opportunity to meet with the city.
What read what letter are you reading from?
I'm reading page one on the.
Today's.
Today's, January 5. So I think in response to that ask, we can say, okay, yes, we will wait to submit our resolution until we have the chance to meet with you. I think that's probably the least we can do. And I think that's the ask from this letter. We can meet with them.
Okay.
And then we then we can say.
We'll invite them to come.
We still strongly support. And, you know, the resolution may be coming that night. Who knows?
Okay.
But we will meet with you first.
Okay. So we'll just we don't need a motion for that. We'll just defer to just to the conference meeting, January 18.
Go and take this item off of this agenda, defer it to the evening agenda of the 18.
Okay.
And it's that there's a placeholder, and I'll have to publish the new item.
Do we need a motion to defer this?
I would please move to defer this item to January 18.
Okay. There's a motion to defer to J R3 to January 18?
And and let me sorry, just clarification is that, are we saying evening of the 18 or?
Yeah, this resolution has to stay.
Conference meeting, but they will still have the conference meeting.
11:30.
With F.
11:30.
With FDOT.
Right. And then we can decide from there what we're going to do at R3 in the evening.
Just move it to the evening agenda.
Perfect. Completely agree. That sounds awesome. County Commission is not meeting until the 25th of January. So Bertha and the the mayor could, you know, they don't have a commission meeting. So can you?
I'll make sure they're aware.
Invite them.
And I'm not sure if Ms. Henry is even going to be working then.
Right.
Because I think she finishes in February. So I'll find we'll find out whether it's Monica or whether it's Bertha. Okay.
That's that sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. So is that a second? Ben?
Second. Yeah, thanks.
It's been moved and seconded to defer to January 18, 2022. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes. And the item's been deferred to January 18. And we're going to see if we could have a conference meeting on on January 18 at 11:30. Thank you.
We're actually going to call it a workshop.
A workshop, I meant to say, workshop.
I just Mayor Udine's going to be in Tallahassee for Broward Days.
On the 18?
On the 18. Yeah. So that's I think FDOT is a great start.
Well, they may have to be in Tallahassee, too.
Okay, on Broward.
No, he's the local person.
Please.
Oh, he stays here.
And is it is it especially, it sounds like some other folks have talked to FDOT. Can I? I want to just talk with FDOT a little bit as well. Mayor, is that all good?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's in my district. Okay, cool. I just want to make sure I'm not.
Well, I'm wondering whether we should have a special workshop before then, because we may have to go up for Broward Days for one reason or another, maybe for this very reason, to talk with the the actual secretary in Tallahassee. So.
Yeah. I'd say let's put this let's keep it the 18 for now.
Well.
We can't change our commission meeting, right? I think we already scheduled everything. We have Florida League of Cities days, February.
I'd say after the 18th, Mayor, maybe you go up to Tallahassee carrying.
Yeah, February.
Because you don't need Broward Days to be there to talk to the secretary.
Okay, I'm not sure if the mayor of the county is really needed here at that point.
I don't think so. I think FDOT on the 18th is.
Yeah, it's just to exchange information.
Exactly. With FDOT, bring the mayor and, you know.
Okay.
You and the mayor can have lunch sometime.
Okay. All right. Okay, R4. Resolution approving request to relocate the African rain tree. We have several people have signed up to speak. Let's see. Seventy-two Thake, you've signed up to speak. Is there a presentation you're going to make tonight? You are. Okay. Okay. So does everyone understand what's going on here? Once upon a time, the previous commission approved a a site plan and development project for this. It was called, what was it called back then?
Marina Lofts.
Marina Lofts. Another late, late night event. I think it was 3 o'clock in the morning, 3:30. I think your architect called it nocturnal justice. Yes. Anyway, the the commission at that time approved the the relocation of the rain tree. Yours truly voted against it. Sorry. But anyway, this is to change the relocation from from the original site that was approved to another site, which is, in this particular case, closer to the water. So Ms. Toothaker, you have a few minutes? You want to tell us a little bit what's going on here?
Thank you, Mayor Stephanie Toothaker. On behalf of Cymbal Development, well, we're going to give you a second chance tonight.
[laughing]
And before I begin, on behalf of the developer, I want you to know that we are fully in support of a tunnel, because this is one of the projects that would be very negatively.
So write a letter to the to the secretary.
Happy to. Happy to. We would be we would be more than happy to do that. I also want to just let you know before I begin the presentation, there are two items that are before you. One is the request to relocate relocate the rain tree to a different location. And the second is a reduction of the bond. We are not asking for a reduction of the bond. In fact, we're not. There's there is security that has already been posted. I believe the city attorney has stated for the record that he's comfortable with the the type of security that's been posted, and we're not asking for any change for that this evening. The only thing that we're asking you to consider this evening is a different location for the rain tree.
Okay.
So before we begin, I just want to introduce basically this side of the room, which is which is the development team. I'm going to do my best. So we have Ossie Cymbal and Hector Torres and Dave. I'm gonna do my best, so we have Ossie Symbol and Hector Torres and David Udine, who are with the development team. Yana Kolev is the architect, and I think she's got some people with her as well. Jeff Shumansky is our arborist, Paul Cox is with Environmental Design. You, you heard from him last time when we were discussing this, and there, he's responsible for moving the tree. And Cory Stanisia on the team as well, Roy Edwards, and I saw Paul Weinberg in the back, and Stephen Botek is our civil. So we brought our team of experts here because we felt like we really wanted to make sure that should you have any questions about, about the, the technical aspects of this, we wanted to ensure that we had the right people here to answer your questions. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss this with you this evening, and I'm, and I am gonna ask Jeff Shumansky and Paul Cox to come up and speak to you because they're really the experts about the moving, movement of the rain tree.
All right.
So as you, as you mentioned, Mayor, Marina Lofts is an approved site plan. And what I'm showing you here is a, is what the approved location of the, the rain tree is, which is behind the marina. I feel like I skipped a page there. So that, that, that blue circle that's on your, on your screen there, that is the approved location. So that, that has already been approved by the prior city commission. The resolution was, was approved in 2013. This is a copy of the resolution, it has a number of conditions in it, all of which we are in, in compliance with. The Marina Lofts project itself is actually still an active site plan under the, the executive order extensions that have been issued, and that is still, that's still a site, a viable, what we call a viable site plan. So we could still today go pull permits for that site plan, but as you know, we are, the developer is proposing an alternate site plan that is going through the process right now, and that site plan is getting ready to come forward to Planning and Zoning Board and ultimately City Commission, and, and that will be fully vetted through, you know, through the public process and through multiple public hearings. So this is a picture of the rain tree. It's a famous rain tree, it's been, it's been the subject of many, many discussions. And, and as you know, right now it sits on a site that is not enjoyed by anybody, it's fenced off, it is, it is protected. The developer, Ossie, has been very careful to ensure that the tree is protected at all times and carefully cared for. So the city did issue a building permit for the movement of the tree quite some time ago. It was properly issued because of the original approval for the rain tree. And as part of that permit, the, the experts did start root pruning the tree. So the tree has already been root pruned for its ultimate, ultimate movement. And as you, as you mentioned, the, the, the tree is moving. It's not a question of if the tree is moving, the tree, the only question that's before the commission this evening is where is the tree going to move? So here again, I'm showing you an image of the original approved site plan, so that is the Marina Lofts site plan. And if you look down at the bottom, you can see the rain tree circled in, in red. And that is, we, we don't think that's the best location for the rain tree. It's behind a, a working marina, it's off to the side, it's not somewhere where it can really be enjoyed and celebrated. So this is the existing location of the rain tree, which obviously has to move because whether it's, you know, the prior approved project or the new project that's in process, that's, that's the location of the, of the garage. So one of the things that's, that's really important is that the Riverwalk.
Could you go back to that slide, could you go back to that slide, please?
Yes.
So, so that's the location of the proposed garage, is that why you?
That's the, that's actually the location of the approved garage and also the proposed garage.
Okay, and that's where you intend to put a garage? On that site?
That's correct, that's, that's correct, yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood you correctly, okay.
So the Riverwalk District Plan envisions that the Riverwalk is a linear element serving as the string that ties together different beads of open space and an opportunity to preserve and celebrate the rain tree on the Riverwalk. We think that's such an exciting element for the Riverwalk, you know, there's other things, you know, along the Riverwalk that people like to enjoy, mostly on the other side of the river. So this would be something that really could be enjoyed by all, by, by boaters, by walkers, hikers, you know, people, people from all aspects would be able to celebrate that tree, you'd be able to see it, even from the historic district across the water. So this is what the proposed location of the rain tree is with, with the new proposed project dropped in there. And, and I'm just gonna show you a couple other slides here. So we did appear before the, the city's marine advisory board, and they, they made some recommendations that we agreed to that we are offering as voluntary site plan conditions, which relate to, to add a condition of site plan approval only allowing boats below a certain size, kayaks, dinghies and similar small-scale watercraft to dock adjacent to or under the rain tree to avoid any conflict with the rain tree. So that would be done through a site plan condition as part of the site plan. It would also, it could be attached this evening, we are, we're offering it as a voluntary condition. It is what, that was pretty much the bulk of the discussion that was at the marine advisory board, just to ensure that there's no conflict with the tree. There isn't any conflict with the tree because the navigable waterway is well outside the tree canopy, but we do intend to, you know, prevent larger boats from, from docking there. We did also, I'm gonna ask my experts to come up because this is where I turn it over. We did also appear before the Historic Preservation Board, who gave us very nice, positive comments about the project, and, and we just felt that it was important to visit all those boards so they, you know, could also have a, a seat at the table for the discussion. The reason this is spinning is because one of the things when, when we do tree relocation, one of the things that we do is we work off of images. One thing that we went above and beyond here as it relates to the African rain tree is we did actual 3D imaging of the actual tree. So what you're seeing here is, that's the actual tree. And I'm gonna ask Jeff, you're coming first, right? I'm gonna ask Jeff to take it from here, and, and Jeff, here you just.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Shumansky, I'm a consulting arborist, and I've been involved in this project peripherally and as a paid consultant for probably seven or eight years now. But I'd like to give you a little bit of my background. I've been a, I have been a full-time, hands-on horticulturist and arborist for almost 50 years now. I started working at, at Perage Jungle and Gardens in the 1970s, became the director of horticulture and the director of facilities, and then from there went with the owner to build a new park on Watson Island, which eventually became Perage Jungle Island. I was involved, I was actually functioning as the owner's personal representative with the construction company. I was functioning as a site designer, and I was the landscape designer of the entire site. Now, that entire site was sort of similar to what we have here, it was Spoorl Island, it was seven to eight feet above the water table. And when we took over those 18 acres, there were about 75 trees on site that we moved off-site and moved back on again with 100% success. Now, we, after 10 years, we still had success. So I do have some experience in relocating large trees, actually to the point where we became a member of the EPA's Greenscapes Landscape Program, and the EPA flew me to a number of conferences around the country to talk about sustainable landscape development and sustainable tree relocation. So when I first, and, and, you know, I'm from South Florida, and I know this area really well, but when I first came on site, I came on with the original arborist, Bob Brennan. He asked me to, to walk around the tree with him and look at it, and I said, well, I was familiar with this tree. And so then, Ossie Symbol called me a couple of years ago and asked me to become part of the, the project because Bob passed away. And then at that point, he told me, well, I knew that Environmental Designs was responsible for relocating this tree. I felt really comfortable with that. Now, I retired about eight years ago from the park after about 40 years and started a full-time consulting job. I have assessed tens of thousands of trees in these past eight years. I've worked with a lot of tree relocators, and the best tree relocator that I'm aware of in this country is Environmental Design, so I feel very comfortable working with them. So I've been visiting this site quite often and looking at the condition of the tree, and actually wrote a report after the tree had been root pruned. I went back about a month later to take a look at its condition. And in all the years that I have been looking at this tree, this was the healthiest I'd ever seen. The roots had been proved, pruned, the tree is being irrigated, it looks great. And actually, right before this meeting, I went and looked at the tree, it's in excellent condition. Now, regarding the area, the location it's proposed to be relocated into, I think is the best location for this tree. It moves it towards the river into more sunlight. It's actually gonna give this tree a better chance to grow. So I feel very comfortable, and if this was my site and if I was this facilities manager and had to live with this decision, this is the decision I would absolutely make. I think this is the best thing for this tree, and of course, the best thing for the project. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
All right, thank you so much. Do you have any other, any other parties, yes? Step forward, introduce yourself.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Paul Cox, I am a regional vice president and principal with Environmental Design. We are a, a family-owned business that actually myself and my older brothers founded back in 1977. I have 35 years direct experience moving large trees. And over the course of our development of our company, we, we started in Houston, Texas, that's where we're all from, that's where we all live. But we built that business from a single office in Houston, Texas, to where now we're a national firm with offices throughout the United States. We're coast to coast, we're in Canada, we're in California, we have several offices in Minneapolis, Charleston, Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, Fort Worth, and Austin as well. Our sole focus is moving and preserving giant trees. We, we've moved some of the largest, if not the largest, trees that have ever been moved on the planet. We like to think of them as our living patients. Thanks for the advance. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna head to my, excuse me. Fast forwarding to my, my, my feature performance here. So in any case, we like to think of all these trees that we've moved going back as far as 1977 to, to living patients, that we actually go back over the course of time and, and revisit and, and check on health. We boast a success rate over this roughly 40 some odd years of doing this of about 98%. And because of our techniques and some, some very specific patents that we've created and methods that we've created, we've been tapped to do some of the most, if not the most high-profile projects contemplated with regard to moving giant trees, including but not limited to working at the White House, at the National Capitol Building. We just, in the last three months, installed the new permanent National Christmas Tree on the ellipse that, assuming there's no vandalism, it'll be there for the next 40, 50 years. We moved, we moved the largest trees that have been moved virtually in the United States, in Central America, Europe, as far away as China and Dubai, and we feel like we have the expertise and the people, manpower to get all these things done in a, in a very specific and detailed manner. Just another few highlighted projects, we, we were the providers of all of the material for the National 9/11 Memorial in Lower Manhattan, as well as the Flight 93 Memorial in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, to name a few. I personally have done work in Nicaragua, Panama, China, Dubai, Portugal, Israel, to name a few spots where we've moved significant trees in all those cases. So again, taking on a project like this is something that we do generally every day somewhere in the country or outside the country, so we have every confidence in, in the success. So any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer.
Okay, great, thank you so much, sir. We have a few people who've signed up to speak. Anyone else on your team, Ms. Tooththaker?
That concludes our presentation, but we're all here to answer questions.
Okay, great, thank you. So there are three people from the public who have signed up to speak, Janet Scraper, followed by Marilyn Zelen and David Harris. Is Marilyn, and are David and Marilyn still in the audience? She's left? How about David? Janet?
Good evening, Commissioner, First and Mayor. Okay, I don't know if y'all had a chance to check your email today, but if you did, you saw that I call, that I requested this be removed from the agenda again. And there's a perfect illustration of why, because you can tell that this was scheduled two days basically after a month of holidays, but two intense weeks of holidays, and nobody knew there was a meeting. The president of Tarpon River didn't know there was a meeting, the president of the Espinaw didn't know there was a meeting, nobody on the group that had worked with Stephanie knew there was a meeting, I didn't know there was a meeting, and the city forester didn't know there was a meeting. And so we find out yesterday, city forester might have found out the day before. And then we're supposed to be prepared to speak tonight, gather the troops, have whatever we have to say. We, we don't have anything to say because nobody knew about the meeting, and they're not here.
So aside from that issue.
But that, but this is my whole point. This is the thing, they had time to get their people together, and they made sure we did not.
But Janet, this issue has been on the table for months.
Okay, yeah, let me tell you the chronology. On eight, okay, well, I'm just gonna back it up to, oh, by the way, since I'm the only one here from Tarpon River Civic Association, I would like to be granted the five minutes that the president would.
Well, you've already used up two minutes of just complaining about it being on the, on the.
Well, it's a big deal.
I'll give you another, I'll give you another three minutes.
Okay. So this project was first presented on 11/24 to the DRC. I mean, that's when they had their meeting. And it was presented as, we're gonna keep the tree in place, big press about all that, and build this thing. So they presented it, the DRC went over it, the tree could not possibly survive there, and so they put a million comments about the project, and nothing happened. In August, eight months later. Oh, wait a minute. The applicant responses to the DRC comments were mostly inadequate and return to, to the applicant is insufficient. No major updates from the applicant or city staff between January and August. Okay? August 6th, I asked staff, what's the status of the project? We hadn't heard anything, and they put this covering over the fence, and everybody was wanting to know what's going on. On the 10th of August, Jim responded that they had resubmitted comments, there were numerous outstanding, under-pressed comments. Applicant indicated they might be revising the site plan. On the 12th, we find out later, two days later, oh, he did say, there may be an associated item on the 8/17 commission agenda, maybe it's about that covering they put on the fence. Well, on the 12th, a permit was issued to move the tree, two days later. But nobody knew about that, not even the city forester, whose, whose approval was required.
The 12th of which month?
August, two days later.
Of 2021?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the next day, the agenda was published, it was gonna be on, the rain tree move was gonna be on the agenda for the 17th, we didn't know anything about it, even though we've been talking to the city that week, so we had it on and pulled. We set a meeting with the applicant to have a public meeting for them to discuss this move the rain tree thing. What is this all about? We don't know, we have lots of questions, how's it gonna work, you know, there's tons of questions. So we have the public meeting, it was well-attended, there was lots of question rates, lots of arborists came, they had serious concerns. And, and the developer agrees to work with the urban forester and, you know, work out, mitigate issues and all this. And this, being on the agenda, is the next thing we heard. No follow-up meeting, no public thing going, okay, look, we did all this great stuff, the tree's gonna be fine, the forester's fine with it, none of that. We just find out like yesterday that it's. We just find out, like yesterday, that it's on the committee, on the agenda again today. So...
What is your objection to the trees being placed in this new location? I haven't heard any of that, can you...
Okay, well, okay, because we don't have the information, and either do you. Because not only were we rushed, the city was obviously rushed, because the backup material that you have today, there are, the arborist report has been revised since the one you, the copy you got, and the five-year maintenance agreement has been revised. So you have outdated information. There's no synopsis by the City Forester, and the, the one he did do, which was not included in this, does not have the detail that the public or the commission would need to be confident the issues have been addressed. The Commission Agenda Memo is a hot mess. It has all this back and forth about the 250K and the 1 million, and it is a hot mess. It's easy to see that if you read it. And is this 1 million letter of credit, is it a irrevocable line of credit?
Yes, yes.
Letter of credit?
Yes.
It's irrevocable.
Irrevocable.
Okay, because that term is not anywhere.
And it's not, and it's not, it's not an issue tonight. The only issue tonight is...
Why is it not an issue tonight?
Because they're not making any change to the city's requirement. They're not requesting a change. They're only requesting a change of location for the tree.
And then there's this tricky what they're asking for stuff that's been going on. I mean, this, it's hard to explain, you know, obviously in 10 minutes, but, you know, what the questions? What happens if they move the tree and then they don't build the project? Can we tie relocating the tree to the permit for the project? When's it gonna be moved? Is it gonna be moved after they redo the seawall and put the docks in and build the Riverwalk, or before? And if it's before, how's that gonna work with the tree? You know, none of, the best thing to do would be to put, move the tree first, and then build, I mean, build all that stuff first, and then put the tree in and leave it alone so they can build the project. But none of this stuff is being discussed. You don't have any, you don't have any information, I mean, I don't have, the public has no information saying that any of the issues that we brought up were mitigated. And, and so I just don't see how, and you don't really have much information because that, I don't know what you were given, I'm sure you have more than the backup documents, but the public has nothing.
Okay.
And, but the point is, you can't just put stuff on agendas at the last minute like this that are important to the public and expect any kind of reasonable comment, and you're not, and you're not even prepared. And, and there's also the transparency issue with the city, and there's a transparency issue with the developer. Why didn't they come back to us? They could have avoided, you know, I could have avoided this because it didn't bother them any.
All right, I think you've made your point, I appreciate it, and you're...
So I would still like you to, to, you know, postpone it because the public does not have a chance.
Okay, 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 we've taken like 10 minutes.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Just one question. Janet, thanks. I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this, because this was on our agenda for August 17th and deferred. So you're telling me that since August 17th till January 5th, there have been no further meetings?
No, I said that on August 17th, we set up a public meeting with the developer for August 25th. We had one, it was a great meeting, we had, I don't know, 50, 60 people. Lots of good stuff came up. But then we haven't had another, any, any feedback?
No conversation, no communication, no meeting since August 25th till today.
Yep.
Can I, can I jump in here? So, that's, that's not my experience.
Public, Ben.
Janet, I'm, I'm talking about the public. So, I asked Tarpon River Civic Association leaders, who should be part of the ongoing conversations with the developer as representative body to work on this? I'm counting, just on my calendar alone, one, two, three, four separate meetings since August 25th, where we have had exhaustive discussions about the tree, the site plan, and so forth. You're, you're disagreeing with me?
Yes, I'm on that list, am I not?
No, you weren't part of these meetings.
Well, then that's your fault, Ben, because I was a very important member of that team, and if I was left off somewhere along the line, I have a problem with that.
So Janet, I, I don't make those decisions, I defer to the Civic Association.
I think that you misunderstood some things. I will, I mean, that's a, that's a personal thing, we can have a discussion about it.
Okay.
But I will tell you that Jay, the President, did not know this was on the agenda.
Tonight?
Dave did not know this was on the agenda. And they are part of the group.
Okay, well, Jay suggested who would be the representatives that would be part of all of these meetings, and so, again, I defer, you're shaking, you're shaking your head?
You can have that, that's sort of a...
Okay.
I think you misunderstood a little bit.
Okay, so...
Mike was, Jay said Mike could take his place, that didn't mean nobody else was, was gonna be involved.
Oh, no, no. Dave Harris was involved, Ralph Stone was involved.
And that's because I made sure they were involved, because I live in the Esplanade, and I wanted to make sure the Esplanade leaders were up on it. And I'm the only one, besides Ralph Stone, that was involved in this thing 10 years ago that has been still involved. And for, you know, for me to get left off the loop is inexcusable.
Wait, wait, you made sure these other people were involved, but you obviously knew that something was going on. So no one was trying to exclude you? I mean, come on.
I'm telling, I'm just telling Ben, Dave and Mike, I mean, Dave and Jay did not know there was a meeting today.
Okay.
Okay, I know they've had meetings, but there was two they had that Jay and I did not know about.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, this group of people is not communicating.
Again, Janet, Jay told me, I, Jay, would not like to be involved in this process, I would like these other leaders to be the, the, the main representatives. So, that's what I did.
Okay.
Right, I mean, that, that was, I defer to...
I'm still saying Jay and Dave did not know there was a meeting today, which is my point. And that we did not have a discussion about mitigating the tree issues that came up at that meeting ever again, public meetings.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, Janet, in these four or five meetings that have had subsequent to the August 25th meeting, we have talked exhaustively and very productively about the tree. It's been amazing conversations, Mark Williams has been part of it, we've had their amazing, arborists as part of it, it's been very productive. I, I think anyone at that meeting would, would share that it's been, you know, good, good...
Okay, well then I will just say, I'm extremely offended that I was left off of this. And, and, and I, and this is just a personal thing, we shouldn't even get into it here. But the fact is, the public, four guys having a meeting is not the public, that's your negotiating committee, okay? The public is everybody else. And if, if I'm not even informed of what my group is doing, you know, we obviously have a problem, but the public doesn't know anything, and I'm talking about the public. I'm not talking about negotiations with three or four representatives that we have said, these are our issues, y'all talking about it. That's not what I'm talking about. And, and I have heard nothing from that group, and so that we, we maybe have an internal communication, but still, there's a bunch of people out there in the public don't even know about this group, and they know nothing. They know we had a meeting, all these concerns came up, and nothing was ever said publicly, there was no public forum, there was no, hey, we did all this great stuff, the tree's gonna be fine, the forester's fine with it. You know, if we had had a public meeting and just let them explain, then fine, it still wouldn't have been okay to have it on January 5th, but at least, everybody would know.
Okay.
So Janet, let me, could I just respond, Mayor?
Yeah, final word.
Janet, fair point, completely fair point. A broader public meeting would have been great, hey, I'll take the blame on that, I, I should have...
The developer knew, they should have known, they...
Okay, well, I'll, look, I'll take, I'll take the blame for that. I should have convened a broader public meeting in December, maybe at some point, to update everything we've been doing and so forth. That's my fault, I apologize for that. I was hopeful that we were gonna be communicating broadly to all the constituencies, that wasn't happening, it's my fault.
I, I will give you credit for that, but I think there was...
Okay, okay.
I think there was miscommunication with our little group.
That was the last word, Janet, just can't keep going on and back and forth.
Okay.
I just want to say one thing, too.
Your point is well taken.
Yeah, thank you, Janet, for coming, I appreciate it. You know, in terms of the public, you know, we all have district meetings every two weeks, and I'm sure you're invited, and I, at my meetings, and I'm sure, Ben, well, okay, we have district meetings on a regular basis that I, I believe you can come and voice concerns, too. But, you know, we also, in term, we get public testimony every single day, I mean, I, I have all my emails here of everyone opposed, everyone supports, and, you know, I read through them, so, I know you're talking about public meetings, but I, I still think there are other ways that you can communicate with us, and I prefer that we all have these conversations at this public meeting, so I can hear all your sides, too. So, I mean, if we were gonna have 20 meetings about every single item outside of the public meeting we already have scheduled and advertised, that, that's just kind of a lot, I'm not trying to necessarily...
I'm not talking about you guys, I'm just talking about the little group we had with our...
Right, right, right. We all need to hear that, too, though, because we're the ones voting on this. So I appreciate that we have these conversations in this forum, and I mean, I know, you know, Ben can, Commissioner Sorenson can have his other meetings, but I, I think this is the public meeting, honestly, and we...
Well, it is, and nobody's here because they didn't know about it, that's why.
Janet, and I just need to add, I need, because you keep saying that, I need to understand why no one knew about it. The, the city commission meetings are published, the calendar's published, how, how far in advance, and then also...
It's usually published on a Friday.
But I mean, the whole year's calendar, including this date, because as soon as we changed the date...
Agenda item.
When we changed the 4th to the 5th, we made that known months and months and months ago.
Agenda item.
Well, the agenda item, when was this agenda published, Chris? It was a little earlier than normal, wasn't it?
It was, because of the holiday, yes.
When was this agenda published?
It was last week Wednesday, probably published on Thursday morning.
A week ago, okay, so a week ago, everyone saw the agenda, I'm sure that everyone...
Okay, so this, my point about these, these holiday meeting things, and, and these seem to be how we do it, you know, whenever there's something...
We have to function 12 months out of the year.
Okay, all right.
I don't know about you, but I had family in town, it was New Year's Eve, we have Christmas, we have dinners, we have parties, we have to clean up, and the next thing you know, this is on the agenda two days from now, and nobody knew.
Okay, your point is well taken, thank you so much. David Harris? Thank you for your patience, David.
Hey, by the way, I just wanna say thank you guys for R3. I think it's great that you're discussing the bridge and tunnel issue, that's very important to our neighborhood, and I think...
And can you speak up a little bit into the microphone?
Oh, sorry, yeah, is that any better? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank you for all the work you guys are doing on R3 to look at that, I think the tunnel's a great idea, and I hope you guys find the best solution for it. The reason I came was, there seemed to be confusion over whether there, it was a $1 million bond or a reduction, that has been taken off the table, and that was my primary reason for coming.
Okay.
So I appreciate your time, and thank you, thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
David, if you could come back here, please, thanks. Do you know about how many meetings we've had together about this?
I don't remember the exact number, but I suspect, I know we, I know we had at least, I think the small group had at least two, maybe three.
Yeah.
And I don't remember, was there a, a larger one earlier? I don't...
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, possibly.
Okay.
No, we've definitely had some meetings about this. I, having heard what Janet said and having heard what you said, I now regret also that we didn't expand it in some way to, to include more people.
Okay.
And, and one of the meetings that's coming up, I guess, Stephanie, you've got everything on the site plan in February 19, or something like that?
We're shooting for it.
Shooting for February 19. And that was certainly my focus at the meeting, was the February 19th meeting. That was sort of the big, the bigger issue from my perspective on, on what's happening.
Great. And I'm sure you remember us talking about who would be the representatives part of this smaller group to discuss this and so forth, and these are the folks, and Jay saying that, you know, these were folks that he thought would make sense, and...
Yeah, I absolutely remember, I remember input from TRCA, which must have been from Jay, that Mike would represent them, and Jay wanted representation from the Esplanade, and the Esplanade can only send two board members because of Florida sunshine laws, so it sent Ralph Stone and, and me.
Okay, great, perfect, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like us to speak on R4? There being none, do you like to sum up?
I would, if I could, please. I think it's just, it's, it's, it's relevant to discussion, I think it's very important. We, we were scheduled for the August 17th agenda, the Civic Association asked us to remove the item, to defer it, so we did, we removed it. We held a meeting on August 25th, then we met with the Tarpon River Civic Association on October 18th, and we did discuss the tree and the site plan. We held a, a formal public participation meeting where we sent formal notices on November 15th, where we discussed the site plan and the tree, and we met with a smaller designated group, we didn't choose the group, we were told who the group was gonna be, we met with that smaller group on December 16th, 2019, 2021, and we gave them the dates of both the tree hearing and the site plan hearing. We said we were shooting for the February planning and zoning board hearings, it's not been scheduled yet, but we are trying to make that agenda, and we did say that the tree was gonna be on January 5th, and we offered to do another meeting on the tree on this past Monday, which was declined. So I think it's just important, there's been a lot, a lot of communication.
To whom was that offer made?
When we did the meeting on December 16th.
Okay.
We said, we just wanna let you know, the tree is gonna be on the 5th, if you'd like us to present, again, even though we feel like all the items have been settled and everybody seems to be satisfied, we thought, we would, we'd be happy to do it again, and, and that was not, they just, they were, I think, in fairness, I think they were more focused on the site plan than the tree, but we did offer.
And when did the public participation letter go out?
Uh, November 15th.
And where did that go?
To everybody, within 300 feet.
Everyone within 300 feet of the site...
Correct.
Received a public participation...
That's correct.
Letter.
Yes.
To attend a meeting on when?
The meeting was on November 15th.
Okay, thanks.
We focused on the site plan because we had already had a meeting on the tree. Yes.
Thanks. And Mayor, I asked the city manager of Mark Williams, at the request of neighbors, if Mark Williams could be involved and, and help and give us his guidance, and he has been phenomenal, and get, met with various representatives of the, of the neighborhood multiple times, and issued, you know, great analysis and answered comments, and has just been a wonderful part of this process to make sure that the city's protected, that we aren't relying solely on, on privately hired arborists, as, as well-known and successful as they are. And so it's been a very robust process of great engagement, great analysis, great questions by a host of folks, and, and we've worked very diligently to get those questions answered.
So are you comfortable, are you comfortable with the final analysis that the African rain tree should be relocated to the new site as opposed to the other site?
Yes, not only am I comfortable with it, but I'm very proud of the work that we've done together on this, Mayor, as a community, I, I really am. I think the, the developer has been wonderful in this process, and hearing concerns and so forth, and the neighborhood has been fantastic, and people like Janet and Dave, who are very knowledgeable and smart, raising significant, serious issues. I think it was Janet who initially raised the concern about, hey, let's get the, let's ask if the city, you know, if Mark Williams would provide analysis and answer some questions and so forth, and so Chris allowed that, and that's been phenomenal, it's make, it's made this better, more productive discussion, and I think, solution.
Okay, do you want to introduce the resolution?
Yeah, happy to introduce it.
Okay. The resolution's been introduced, any other further questions or comments? Vice Mayor, no? Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Resolution Number 13-142 and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
And Mayor Trentalis.
Yes. The resolution's approved.
The funny guy, the mayor.
It was that pregnant pause.
Yes.
Yes.
Suspense was killing everyone.
Okay, PH1, Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution Approving Parks, Recreation, Beaches Advisory Board's Recommendation. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, for approval of 16 park improvement projects. No one has signed up to speak, do I have to close public hearing even though no one's signed up to speak? Alan?
Not really, that's fine.
Do it?
Can't hurt.
Okay, I'll, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Some of...
Second.
Please call the roll on closing public hearing.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a recommendation from the Parks, Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board to authorize 16 parks improvement projects and financing through the Parks and Recreation General Obligation Bond Series 2022, and delegating authority to the city manager to execute all documents and instruments necessary to proceed with the 16 park improvement projects pursuant to the terms and conditions outlined in City of Fort Lauderdale Resolution Numbers 18-261 and 20-08, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the resolution's approved, the adoption of the approved Parks and Rec Advisory Board recommendations of the 16 approved improvements projects.
Even though they're all in District 4, that's okay.
There's Florinadas in there.
We need the most help. I think we each got one.
Well, I guess District 4 needs the most improvement.
We need a lot of work.
A lot of work.
A lot of work. Lot of opportunities.
Thank you. More swing sets. OFR1, this is an ordinance amending of Division 2, Administration and Enforcement of Article 4 of Chapter 26, to revise the administrative appeal process for parking citations and defective meter, parking meters. Any questions regarding this?
It's not regarding this, but we had the conversation about offering resident parking rates to people who are own property here, but they're only seasonal. Did we ever follow up on that conversation? Did I have that conversation with you all, or did I have it with someone else?
What do you mean, a parking break?
I'm just thinking of parking, sorry. Okay, so maybe I didn't bring this up with the commission, where did I bring this up, Chris? Maybe my staff agenda review?
Uh, yeah.
Did we bring it up with the commission? I'm sorry, I'm just jogging my memory.
It's okay.
Okay, so one issue we need to discuss and think about, it's not related to this item, though. So if you own a second home in Fort Lauderdale, you don't get a resident parking pass, at least the people that were complaining to me didn't. So we were, I asked Chris or somebody if we could look into that, so just want you all to know about that, so anyone who's a second homeowner...
The question was if they're a second homeowner here, and are here, and own property here, are they a resident when they're here?
A residence.
But you're a resident, you own property.
Four or five months out of the year rather than permanently.
Right, you should get a, you should get a resident parking pass.
If you own a home, I sort of get that you are truly, you're not a renter, you are a resident of our city, because you own real property here. A part-time resident, but you're, you're not a visitor.
You own property, you're paying taxes. So just, if we can follow, what are your, what are your thoughts of that, before we get to this? Sorry.
I think there's merit to what you're saying, I mean, a lot of people make this their second home, should they be entitled to, you know, reduce parking? I don't know, how would that impact, how would that impact our income? Would that, would that affect our bonds? You know, all those questions keep coming up.
I mean, I know it's legal, other cities do it.
I think, I think you're right, but I think, Alan, Mr. Wallo needs to get back with us, or Mr. Herbst needs to get back with us, to tell us if that, if there's anything that would negatively impact our bond obligations because of the income we derive from parking meters?
It would be so de minimis. I don't, we'll look into it, but I think it would be so de minimis in what it might reduce, that it really wouldn't impact, at least that's my initial thought.
And I would agree with that, so we typically have, when we do bonds for parking garages, we have a revenue pledge that's typically of the entire system, so you don't want to do anything that's going to have a negative impact on the pledged revenues, but to the manager's point, I don't think that the material impact would be significant. I, you know, again, I don't think you're talking all that many residents who own homes, who are not full-time, who are going to want beach parking passes. I know in all the years I've been, you know, a homeowner in Fort Lauderdale, I think I had a beach parking pass one year, so...
And the even better answer is Laura just informed me, as I, it makes complete sense, we don't have any bonded debt at this point in parking, so...
Are we, yeah, are we completely done with that?
Yep.
That would even be an issue then.
Speaking of beach parking, Chris, why don't we include the La Solas garage in the beach parking permits?
I have no idea. I know we, we look at where there's, for those that pay the lesser amount, I know we, from time to time, look at where is a comparable spot that's not ground zero of where the main visiting population parks when they visit the beach, but...
Maybe if we could just look into that a little bit?
Okay, we'll take a look.
Getting back to the Vice Mayor's point, I think there's certain merit to that, can we include that in tonight's, tonight's resolution? It's actually an ordinance, first reading, maybe between the time we have the first reading and second reading, we should consider amending it so that we can include property owners?
I don't think it's going to fit within the wording of the advertisement, but we can, we can, we can address it in a, in a separate issue.
I don't think it fits what this...
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd probably have to do it separately because of advertising and notice.
Okay, all right.
Let me, I just have a quick question, or a couple of quick questions on that. Is, so, sorry if I'm slow on this, the, so if you're a property owner, you get a reduced parking rate for, at the beach?
We already have a resident rate, that if you are homesteaded in your property, and you come in, and you can get a permit to park in certain areas of the city, certain lots, and you pay a much reduced rate than if you came and did pay by phone.
Yep.
The question that the Vice Mayor brings up is that you could own a home in, I'll use a real-life example, in New York, and in Fort Lauderdale, and when you're...
You aren't homesteaded.
And when you're here, you're not homesteaded, but you're here in a house that you own as real property, that you pay real taxes on, that you should qualify for a resident parking permit while you're here functioning as a resident.
Right, so that, yeah, that makes sense to me, I agree with that. And then what's the, the reason for not allowing renters? Property owners versus renters?
I think generally there's a benefit to be a resident of Fort Lauderdale.
Property owner, because you can be a resident and still a renter.
Right. Correct.
So we're differentiating because we're giving advantage to if you own property?
I don't know, let's go to Ben Rogers there, is that true, or can you demonstrate for purposes of resident rate that you are full-time resident of, even if you're not homesteaded in real property?
I think you can be a renter.
Yeah, I'm sure you can.
Well, I think you should be, I don't think we should discriminate.
You could be a full-time, you could be a full-time resident and be a renter.
Right, sign a lease.
Let's go to Ben.
Just ask Paul Shetland.
Don't think I didn't think that.
Good evening, Ben Rogers, Transportation Mobility. Yeah, so I think the section you're talking about is Section 26161, and Vice Mayor, you did bring this up at a previous meeting, I started reviewing the ordinance, and have actually initiated review with the City Attorney's Office. In that section right now, it says that it, the residency of a person is verified by the Director of Transportation Mobility by providing a valid Florida license or state of Florida identification with a photo, a vehicle registration, and other such documents is provided to proof of residency within the City of Fort Lauderdale. What we're doing right now is reviewing those considerations, and if it's the will of the commission to mitigate some of those or lessen the requirements, we can make those adjustments. So that review has already begun, I don't know how quick it will turn around and how complex the definition of residency will become, but we are working on it.
Good, okay, so that does not differentiate between property owner and renter, so...
Doesn't sound like it.
Yeah, which is great, I think that's, that's the right thing to do.
Agreed, right.
But I will say this, can I just, can I just say this, that...
Sure.
You're not going to get somebody that, that, you're not going to be able to help the type of person that the Vice Mayor is speaking of if we require a driver's license, because you're not allowed to get a driver's license in two states.
Right, but that's where he said other residency documentation or something.
Yeah.
So there's...
So that's like a lease?
You have to change it.
Right, exactly, so something, yeah, then, yeah, exactly. And Vice, sorry, Commissioner Glassman, if I was hearing you right, you were saying, why at the La Solas garage isn't, can't the discounted rate apply, right?
Right, I think it should.
Yeah, I agree, and I remember I asked about that at some point ago, and I remember what I heard back, Chris, was that because the garage was new and revenue, they didn't want to discount revenue or something by having more, you know, the lower rate. I remember someone told me that.
Yeah, let's go to Ben for that, too, I mean, there is a business model around how our parking is structured, so...
Something like that.
Yeah, so I think the first point of clarification, Commissioner Sorenson, is there's multiple resident rates, first off, so the one you're talking about, and that Commissioner Glassman brought up, is the beach resident permit, not necessarily the hourly rate. So the hourly rate is offered in the garage, but the beach resident permit, which is $26 per year, is not one of the eligible locations this time. We talked about this maybe 12 or 16 months ago, about creating a new permit for the resident beach, maybe including some other parking locations like the garage, and some of the newer lot that we will be bringing online in the next six months up at North Beach, but we haven't got to that point yet. So the only words of caution I have is that garage starts to fill up, and I know it hasn't been at its optimum performance to this point, but with the Marina construction around the corner, I think that garage is going to fill up. We also have an existing parking agreement in place with the Marina, that once they start to activate, almost half of the garage capacity is allocated to the Marina. So my, just words of caution is if we allow the $26 permit to go in there, to Commissioner Sorenson's point, the revenue stream that was kind of projected or associated with that garage would, would be lessened.
Okay, well, that's, that's, in my view, that's a good problem for us to grapple with, because, Chris, I remember you and me talking about the garage, and you basically saying, hey, we're not getting the number of people parking in this thing when it was